We're ready. Good evening, members of council, our audience at home and here in City Hall. We have an unusual circumstance tonight in that we have a quorum worth of city council members, which is three of five, so we can and should go forward with an official council meeting. But the two folks that are gone are Mayor Hovland and Councilmember Mary Brindle, who is our mayor pro tem. Those are the two people that are appointed at the beginning of the year to run public meetings on behalf of the city. Because we don't have either one of them present, we have suggested from staff that Councilmember Staunton be appointed to be the acting mayor this evening. We are suggesting that because he has the most tenure among the three council members that are here tonight. And so I would, we would like to have that as an official action on behalf of the council. So if we could have a motion, a second, and a vote to appoint Councilmember Staunton as the temporary acting mayor, that would be good.
Mr. Manager, I'd move to appoint Councilmember Staunton as acting mayor for the evening.
Second. Are there any other nominations from the floor? Yeah, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. And with that, we'll call the meeting to order. Clerk Callison, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Fisher.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Acting Mayor Staunton.
Here.
Councilmember Brindle.
Mayor Hovland.
Thank you. Next up is approval of the meeting agenda. We have a meeting agenda in front of us this evening. Mr. Manager, are there any changes to the meeting agenda?
There are no changes to the meeting agenda.
And hearing that, can I have a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The meeting agenda is approved. Next up is community comment. This is the portion of the meeting where we invite comments from the public on items that are not on this evening's agenda. We ask folks to come forward to one of the two side podiums, or if you have something to show us, the center podium. You'll have three minutes. The lights on the podium will tell you when there are 30 seconds left, it will turn yellow. When your time is up, it will turn green, and we'll ask you to wrap up your comments. And I would invite at this time, any comments from the audience. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Acting Mayor. My name is Frank Lorenz, 7151 York Avenue South, Edina. I would like to comment on the new apartment complex that's moving toward completion at 49th Street and essentially the intersection of 50th and France. I don't know when they're actually going to start taking in tenants, but it looks like construction has moved along, and so I would assume that by this fall, or late this fall, people will be starting to move in. Traffic, as was mentioned several times two weeks ago in this room, is catastrophic already during the rush hour periods on 50th Street. And the reason for that is that people that work in the Opus complex, or west thereof, and people that are trying to get there or leave there at night, depending on whether it's the morning rush hour or the evening rush hour, are using 50th as an alternative to Highway 62, which is jammed in both directions during both rush hours for two and a half hours. Now, I don't know how many apartments are in this new complex at 49th Street and France. More than 100, assuming that there are two people per apartment. That's 200 people, assuming that they're working adults. That's going to be 200 cars leaving that complex in the morning, or trying to, and then the same 200 cars coming back in the evening. And so one wonders whether the Edina city government shouldn't be already speaking to Met Council about trying to do something about establishing some kind of a ferry bus, F-E-R-R-Y, bus between Highway 169 and the Opus complex generally, and Highway 35W that would be affordable and would carry, you know, transit bus, 70 or 75 passengers, and would eliminate some of this congestion, because, you know, I've been stuck in these traffic jams that have to thread their way east in the evening on 50th through the many, many stoplights. And it's moving at a snail's pace, and people lose their temper, and it takes a long time. But it's faster than Highway 62, so in your bucket list of things to do, you might consider that.
Thank you, Mr. Lorenz. Interesting notion. Other comments from members of the public? All right, seeing none, I'd ask for a motion to close community comment.
So move.
And a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Same sign. All right, next on the agenda is the city manager's response to community comments. This is the portion of the agenda where we respond to comments that were made from the community at the last meeting. And Mr. Manager, do you have any responses to the comments at the last meeting?
I do. Thank you, Your Honor. We had one community comment offered at the May 21st meeting. It was a gentleman named Bill Hay, who lives at 5275 Grandview Square. His comment was twofold. One, he wanted to thank the council for the time and energy that you put in to make this a great community. But he also wanted to tell you that he felt that he was a beneficiary of density, and he lived in Grandview Square. He was looking forward to the benefits that greater density in his neighborhood were going to create for him. And he knows that you don't hear that very often, and he wanted to make sure you knew that at least one person in the community thought that that was a good project, and that the density that is happening in his neighborhood is a good thing for him and his quality of life.
All right. I'll look forward to the response to Ms. Lorenz's comments. I actually think there's an interesting notion in there about working with the Met Council as we gain greater density in that 50th and France area, to see if we can't add some public transit to alleviate that congestion. All right. Next up on the agenda is adoption of the consent agenda. Are there any items that members would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item C, the final approval, or the approval of a preliminary plat on Mohawk Trail.
All right, so we'll remove item C. Councilmember Fisher? And I have nothing else to remove, so with the exception of item C, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Consent agenda is approved. And then item C on the consent agenda, Councilmember Anderson.
Yes, thank you. We spent some time at our last council meeting going back and forth on the Mohawk Trail subdivision. And Member Fisher brought forth the most salient point of the evening, and that's to recognize the rights of private property owners, the right to subdivide, which is absolutely correct. So I don't think that there's any question that ultimately, there can be the appropriate subdivision there. However, it's important to recognize legitimate concerns of the neighbors as well. There are adjacent property owners, and they have concerns about the potential impact on trees, disturbance of habitat, and especially stormwater runoff and management. The withdrawal of the owner's variance request is what makes the subdivision, I believe, possible without granting the variance. There is, there was, on April 4th, I believe, and you can correct me, Director Teague, if this isn't accurate, on April 4th, I believe, that there was a plat proposed that was either approved or considered that recognized the required setbacks.
As part of their application, there was a submittal that showed a code compliant building pads, where they met all of the setback and steep slope ordinance requirements.
Yes, yeah. So I just wanted to mention that that, I think, in going forward, would be something to consider strongly. And we know that there's no application yet, and those lots have not been sold. No one's come forth to say we'd like to build on them. But I would just ask you and staff to be very vigilant of the enforcement of the conditions surrounding the subdivision. The stormwater runoff and management there is a primary concern. The loss of trees is a big deal, I think. Frankly, I think that this subdivision, while, will occur. If this were a publicly held property or located somewhere else, my guess is that there would be quite a bit of concern about that disturbance of habitat, and not so much in this case, other than from immediate neighbors. So I just urge you to consider that carefully when it comes forward.
Certainly.
And if I could ask a follow-up question on that. Am I correct in assuming that this is going to need to come back to us in any event?
That's correct. They need to come back for a final plat approval, and then attached to that, we would have a development agreement, where we would get into the, have the details of that grading plan.
And one of the conditions is that they have to meet this 25% or less disturbance in steep slopes, correct?
That's correct.
And so whatever proposal they come back with will be, and they have one year to come back for the final plat, or with a request for an extension?
Correct.
So it's not like this will proceed without another view by the council?
That is correct.
And when they do that, or they require to make, you know, when they come in with a particular proposed build-out plan, there's a whole set of application materials that will have to be included in that, is that right?
That's correct.
So all of those criteria that are in our subdivision ordinance would have to be satisfied?
They would. And they would be included in the development agreement as well.
Okay. Further comments? Councilmember Fisher? Councilmember Anderson? I'd entertain a motion to approve this item, then?
So move.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay. Motion passes. All right. The next portion of the agenda is special recognitions and presentations, and the first agenda item is Hennepin County Commissioner Jan Callison. Commissioner Callison represents the 6th District of Hennepin County, which includes 16 different cities. She informed me before the meeting that she has made it to 11 of those 16, I believe.
More or less.
More than that. And also visits the watershed district, so in representing us at the county board, Jan is very busy visiting various cities. She was elected to the county board in 2008, re-elected in 2012 and '16, and served as the chair from 2015 through '19, and she currently chairs the Hennepin County Regional Railroad Authority. Jan, welcome. Thanks for being here this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Staunton. Councilmembers and staff, it's my pleasure to be here this evening. I appreciate the time on your agenda. I have a few items of general interest, I hope, and then a few items specific to Edina, and I'm always happy to take your questions and your comments as well. So I delivered a handout to each seat. It's excerpts from our 2019 assessment report. I thought you might find it interesting. The cover sheet is an overview of property values in Hennepin County during that time period. You would note that for the past six years, there's been an increase in property values in Hennepin County, probably not a surprise. That's really when the recession ended. And if you read further down to the fourth paragraph, you'll see that during that time period, the median value of a single residential house or property in Hennepin County has increased by almost 50%. So six-year time period, 50% increase. That's a pretty dramatic amount across the county. The next several items are some maps, because they will give you a sense for how values change across the county by community, as well as by property type. And I thought you would find that interesting as a comparison. And the fact that property taxes are relative as well. What happens in one part of the county will impact the amount of property taxes paid in Edina. And the final sheet is specific to Edina, some data. It shows that, for example, there were 71 new houses built in Edina during that period of time. So to say, I thought that would be of general interest to you. County staff is proposing a change in our tobacco ordinance. You've already changed your ordinance, I believe, but the county is proposing to change the sale, the age of purchase of tobacco from 18 to 21. That is perhaps less significant than you might think, because we only have jurisdiction in this area over five western Hennepin County communities and the airport. So St. Bonnie, Rogers, Mound, Greenfield, the airport, two gas stations at the airport. So it's not sweeping across Hennepin County. You may read articles in the newspaper. I want you to be aware of that. It's also slightly different from what you've seen in other communities. The staff is proposing four provisions, so change in the age of purchase, change in the age of people who can sell, change in how flavored tobacco, or where flavored tobaccos can be sold, and then also a change relating to cigars. And that will come to us in a public hearing next week, and then probably to the board for action later on in the month of June. For the past several years, I've mentioned child protection to you. That's been an important area for Hennepin County, and we've invested a lot of money trying to make sure that we have adequate staffing, as well as an adequate approach, if you will, to supporting families who are in need of assistance with child protection issues. I'm happy to say that we are seeing some improvements. So we have fewer children who are being removed from their homes, more children being placed with family in foster care, and in fact, we are seeing fewer child protection reports. So that is all good news, and I'm happy to share that, even though we have a ways to go. And then finally, we also had a report from our legislative staff, since the session ended a week or so ago. And for the county, I think, we would generally say the session was perhaps interesting, but certainly not transformative. We're going to receive some increase in county program aid. That's the general unrestricted money that we receive, that's similar to local government aid. But in this case, probably whatever we receive will be offset by the fact that the legislature did not adjust para, the public employee retirement account. So I don't think we're going to see a big bump to the Hennepin County budget. We did not see any increase in community corrections funding, and certainly no increase in transportation funding. So some of the areas we'd hoped to see some improvement in, we didn't see, but certainly we're grateful for the CPA increase that's there. Then more Edina-specific, the Southdale Library. We had our first information session on that last Thursday, I believe it was. As you are aware, we are proposing to close the existing library at Southdale Center, or Southdale Regional Center, if you will, and to build a new library at the Southdale Shopping Center. And that facility would be built by the developer of the shopping center. We would do the interiors, and we would operate the library. We'd be renting that space from the owner of the shopping center. As I say, we had the first informational session on that last Thursday. We have a second session on Saturday, so folks are still interested. There's another chance to come and learn more about it. It is not a done deal, despite what you might have read in the Star Tribune. So the county board will be discussing it pluminarily on Tuesday, the 11th, and then expect it to take final action on the 18th, which is the following Tuesday. I would say generally that people who are supportive was my sense at this informational session. Lots of concerns about traffic, and getting to and from Southdale Center, and making sure that you can get across the street as a pedestrian. And so there were commitments to continue to work on that, and to work with the city of Edina, and I'm sure these are not comments that are unusual to you, a lot of concern about congestion in that area. Secondly, and speaking of congestion, I did ask for an update on France Avenue Bridge today, and where that stands. So I can report that. The project is moving forward, as you know, and going well. Port the bridge deck last week, and this is a MINDOT project that we're working with them on. They are on track to open France Avenue from 66th Street to the bridge, so this is the roadway south of the bridge, during the workday on Friday, June 7th. So during the workday of this week, before the evening rush. They also will open the ramps from Highway 62 East to France Avenue, and from France Avenue to Highway 62 East during the workday on Friday, June 7th. So the ramps on the east side should be open this Friday, and then the bridge and the two ramps on the north side of the bridge are scheduled to be open in mid-July. I know it's been painful. I've been on Circes, I've been on York, and we appreciate the patience of people as they've dealt with that traffic congestion. In addition, the city received a recycling grant from the county. This was approximately $60,000, and it will permit the city to expand recycling collection in city parks. So thank you for your energy around improving recycling in Edina. And I wanted also to report that there was affordable housing grant to an Aon facility at 4100 Edina. So that's something that we were pleased to be able to make available. And as you may have read, we have started a fund for supportive housing in Hennepin County. The folks that we assist, the county clients, people with maybe mental health, chemical dependency, folks that perhaps coming out of the foster care system, those folks have a particularly hard time if they are low-income finding housing. And so we have allocated $2 million towards helping to partner with others to make sure that there are housing options for that population. So we are hopeful that that will ease some of the affordable housing challenge that folks who are in the county system see on a regular basis. So that's my report. Again, happy to take your questions and your comments, and pleased to be here tonight.
Thank you for being here. Councilmembers, any questions? I would, go ahead. I would just add a comment that we are scheduled to begin residential composting service in January, so trying to keep up with Hennepin County and the great course that you're charting on that front, so.
I'm pleased to have it.
Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair, members of council, thank you. I do also want to thank Commissioner Callison for the role she played in ensuring that our new courthouse would be in Minnetoka rather than downtown. It's a significant change in circumstances if we were to change courthouses from the Southdale courthouse and go that direction rather than to Ridgedale. So it's very important to, not only to our staff internally, in terms of their travel time and how they participate in court, but for our residents as well. Much different situation. So thank you. I would just make a comment about the library. And I'm actually feeling really positive about this move, and I think it's sort of bringing Southdale back to where it started, in terms of, it was sort of Main Street, in a way. You know, because at that time malls, no one knew what a mall was, so it was sort of all the businesses and all the components that made community. And I think we're kind of going back that way with, you know, health and fitness, and a library, and, you know, all these components coming together. I think it could be really exciting, and, you know, as we look to the future of the Southdale area. And I would also say that the county service center that's in the mall right now is, it's great. I mean, I love going to that location, to that service center. Not only are the staff great, and they do good work, but, you know, you can actually run to a, you know, a shop if you know you're going to be waiting for a little while. So again, getting people in the mall and utilizing that part of our community, I think, is a really good thing, and the county's been in a leadership position there.
Well, from the library standpoint, the chance to put the library in a place where there's a lot of action is really exciting. So as you point out, the synergies that exist, I think, will be important. We have seen for our service center, an increase in the usage, so the fact that it's there has made it more accessible to folks. And what I understand is that oftentimes, at the service center, documents might be missing. They would say to folks, when they were all in one place, go to the library and Xerox something, or go to the library and find something. They'll be able to do that again, so the service quality, I think, will improve also from our service center. So lots of win-wins. It's also economically, I think, a good spot for the county to be in. I know there've been questions about the disposition of the property, and I should add that the normal routine for the county is at the point when we decide that that land is not needed anymore. And one of the advantages of this is that we could keep the library open while the new library's being built. But at some point, when we're ready to close the old library, the county board would decide whether or not the land was surplus. And if it's surplus, then the county board would declare it surplus, and we'd follow our normal processes of disposing of property at that point. But that's several years in the future.
Any further?
Okay, you're welcome.
Well, Commissioner Callison, thank you for being here. We really appreciate your efforts to come and visit us on a regular basis, and we know there's many other cities in the southwest metro that you do as well, in addition to all the hard work every day. So thanks for your work on our behalf.
My pleasure. Thank you.
All right. Next up is an Arden Park construction update. We have Susan Faust and Laura Damjančić, got that one right, from the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District, to give us a little update on how things are going at Arden Park.
Good evening, Acting Mayor Staunton and councilmembers, and thank you for the opportunity to provide an Arden Park construction update this evening. As you know, the Arden Park construction project kicked off in early January, and kicked off with demolition and removal of, first, the aging shelter building and the aging playground structure, as well as removal of buckthorn and basisspecies from about seven acres of the project area, as well as removal of large ash trees, and removal of other trees that were in conflict with the trail, stormwater, and creek construction. Removals also included the taking out of a low-head dam that was in Minnehaha Creek, just north of 54th Street Bridge, and the associated contaminated sediments that had accumulated behind that dam, as well as removal of the concrete underlayment below 54th Street Bridge that was not integral to the structure of the 54th Street Bridge. I'll also note here that the retaining wall to the right of the image here was also removed. It was not originally contemplated as part of the construction project, but as creek construction progressed, we determined that the low-head dam also extended underneath this retaining wall, and it was determined that the retaining wall had to be removed as well. That bank is now stabilized by rounded rock, and will be further stabilized by vegetation later this month. As removals completed, we moved on to sort of the construction and building phase of the project, and that included the creek remeander, the first kind of major piece of construction, that required the contractor to reroute Minnehaha Creek throughout the project site. Sheet pile was placed at the northern end of the project, and water was pumped downstream, diverting water throughout the project site. And the next portion of the project included rebuilding the stream channel, and also remeandering the creek channel, and building new channel. The first section of creek channel that was constructed is shown here, and the salvaged wood that was taken from the site was reused within the project site by building these large wood structures. Here, the contractor is inserting a large log into the bank of the stream pinned by the two larger logs on either side. This essentially provides stabilization in this creek bank itself, provides habitat, underwater habitat, for fish and invertebrates to collect underneath those logs, and also provides diversion structure, so that when, this is an outside bend of the creek, and so when water rushes at this outside bank, it'll be further protected by this large wood structure. Here, we're showing the construction of another large wood structure, where a root wad is inserted into the bank of the creek, further protecting it. This also deflects boaters, as, you know, people come through the creek, and if the flows are high, and a boater is pushed into the bank, they're being gently pushed back to the center of the creek by this large root wad. The exhumation of the new channel progressed throughout January and February, and this was then further stabilized by construction of the creek bank through the construction of fabric encapsulated soil lifts, or FES lifts. These next few images show the progress of that construction. First, the contractor lays down a coconut blanket, a coconut fiber blanket, and then large forms are placed in tiers that will construct the creek bank. These, the coconut fiber blanket and these forms are then backfilled with a soil and small rock mixture, and then that front surface of the soil is seeded, and then the coconut fiber blanket is then wrapped over the soil lift, and kind of call it a soil burrito, and then that is essentially what forms the new creek bank. This work is obviously done under frozen soil conditions, when we don't have flow in the creek, and the damage to the site is minimized because the soil is frozen. So there is some final work to be done on these soil banks this spring. That top surface of fabric will be trenched into the existing creek bank, the existing soil. And although the creek banks do look very engineered when they're finished, they are already greening up. The seed that was placed in the soil lifts is germinating, and the creek banks are vegetating. They'll be further planted with trees, shrubs, and wildflowers and grasses later this month. After the creek banks were built, we installed habitat boulders in the stream, as well as some rock riffles. They provide increased habitat for smaller invertebrates to kind of shelter behind them, provide a food source for larger fish. They also provide an interesting paddling experience, because they create a little bit of a rapid experience when the water conditions are high enough to provide that. The DNR restricts work in the creek between March 15th and June 15th, so our contractor needed to be finished with the creek work by March 15th. And then they moved on to installation and construction of the bridge abutments for both the north bridge, had been a previously inaccessible part of the park, as well as the south bridge. And in the background there, you can see the helical piers that were installed to construct the boardwalk that is now in place. As you know, we went straight from winter into a very fast snowmelt and spring rains, and our contractor jumped right on some temporary erosion control measures. We're very pleased that they were able to do that. That included blowing straw mulch onto the site, installing silt fencing, as well as hydroseeding all of the soil stockpiles. So we limited the erosion into the creek during those high flows, and we had ice So, we limited the erosion into the creek during those high flows, and we had ice jams and that sort of thing. During these high-water conditions, the contractor has been required to pump water from all the work areas. They've been very efficiently doing that and essentially install a sump pump next to these bridge abutment construction areas. And in the stormwater areas, they can be working in dry conditions. Folks might imagine that the contractor has been kind of stalled by some of the high-water conditions and high precipitation levels, but they've been very efficient in getting their work areas dried out so they can continue work. There have been some high-water issues related to precipitation, and that's something that we have been working with the contractor to adjust their schedule and make sure that we are moving work forward despite the weather conditions. We're thankful that we're having a little bit of a dry period despite tonight's rain. We are having some kind of warmer, windier days that are bringing creek levels down as well as Lake Minnetonka levels down. We were also able to plant eight large splayed trees into the site. This was work that the city forester Luther Overholt took on separate from the original construction budget. Eight trees were placed throughout the site, and then another two will be placed this fall, and they're establishing really well, full leaf-out this year and looking really healthy. These trees were targeted in areas where we had done some tree removal or some buckthorn removal, and additional screening was required or shading was preferred. This is an area just north of the playground where we'd like to have some additional shade. As I mentioned earlier, the northern boardwalk has been constructed. This, again, is an area that was mostly floodplain and floodplain wetland that had been inaccessible part of the park. Trail moved from Brookview Avenue down the slope, and then there are stairs that come down that slope to Brookview that connect to this boardwalk system that then connects to a bridge across the creek in the northern part of the park. The northern trail is about a third constructed at this point, and the contractor is continuing to work on that now. Folks have been very interested to know about how we are replacing the number of trees that were removed as part of the project. I'm happy to report that about 3,000 bare-root trees and shrubs have been planted throughout the project site up to date, and another about 1,000 potted trees and shrubs will be planted later on this month. Folks have also been interested to know how the stream banks are holding up under the high-water conditions, and while there have been a couple small areas where the creek flows have gotten behind those soil lifts and have done a little bit of erosion, the creek banks are very stable under these flood flow conditions, which we're really happy to see. They're already, as you can see, beginning to vegetate, and the benefit of having these kind of flat banks adjacent to the creek is now the creek is reconnected to its floodplains, and we do have these very high flows like we've seen this spring. Those floodplain areas are able to take on these flood flows and then retain and store that floodwater during these times of high water, and then when the creek levels go down, the floodplain water then will recede back into the creek. I want to touch a little bit on budget. The construction budget for the Phase 1 of the project, this major creek restoration, the stormwater system, and the trails, all of that totaled about $3,85,900. We're about 45% of the way through the total construction budget right now. We're yet to install some higher-cost items, like I mentioned, the vegetation, the trails, the two bridges. So, we're doing really well on the total construction budget and in terms of progress as well. The construction administration budget is $339,400, and that pays our engineer and their landscape architecture team and engineering team to oversee some areas of construction that staff is, that's not their expertise. And we're about 56% of the way of the total construction administration budget at this point. It's a budget we're watching very closely. The good thing about that is moving forward, we have some very straightforward items of construction to complete, the stormwater and the trails. Vegetation are all very simple and straightforward items. We also have the benefit of having some great expertise on both city staff and watershed district staff that will be able to oversee some of the construction moving forward, which will minimize costs in that budget. And just really quickly, want to touch on the next steps for the Phase 1 of the project. That includes completing the shelter building pad preparation. This is something that we're doing in advance of the Phase 2 contractor coming on to build the shelter building. That's nearly complete now. Where you have all the trails roughed in at this point, so all of them are kind of cut through, and after the stormwater features are constructed, our contractor will be moving on to construction of trails. And this is a diagram of the stormwater system, a two-stage system that will be installed starting late this week, early next week, a pretreatment structure that takes kind of large floatables out of the stormwater, treating about 80 acres to the northeast of the site, and then moving that stormwater through a swale system, a series of large enhanced rain gardens, before discharging into the creek. The bridges are currently under fabrication and will be installed shortly after the trails are put in. We anticipate that the bridges will both go in in one day. We'll restrict access to the creek by paddlers during that one day when the bridges are craned in, and we'll have information about the city's website and the watershed district's website about that. And the creek accesses will be the last piece to go in because the creek is very high right now. We'll wait until it draws down a little bit before we can get these creek accesses in. There are three throughout the site, one at the north, one sort of in the center of the site near the new shelter building, and one at the south just north of 54th Street. And just really quickly, I'll touch on the project timeline for the Phase 2, the city's work to update the playground. The new playground equipment is anticipated to go in in late August and early September. That contractor, that subcontractor anticipates at about five days of work. And then, beginning later in June and going through November, the shelter building construction will be completed. The finished landscaping around the shelter building will be installed, and the hockey rink improvements will go on in this fall. And if I have not touched on anything you're curious about, I'm happy to answer any questions, and we welcome you to both go to the city's website and the watershed district's website for construction updates. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Damjančić. Any questions? Councilmember Fisher.
I don't really have any questions. I think you were very thorough, and it was actually really nice to see the full picture. And I've driven by periodically, in fact, today drove by, and it felt like this was the peak of destruction, you know, in terms of, but I think from some of the photos, maybe not quite. But my observation is that even though there's this complete mess of construction, I actually like it a lot because the creek is so visible, and, you know, when the new trees and everything grow up, it'll still be visible. I think it's going to be fantastic. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I noticed also that you mentioned, when you put the bridges in, that you'll be preventing paddlers from going through. Does that mean they're going through now?
Yes. In fact, we've seen a number of people, primarily in kayaks. I think people are aware that the creek flows are very high right now.
It's pretty fast.
It is very fast. Typically, when folks call the watershed district, ask about paddling conditions, we recommend that people paddle between 75 and 150 cubic feet per second. The creek is well above 300 cubic feet per second currently. So, we are recommending that people paddle right now. I know people are very interested in high-water conditions, and folks that have been out west and paddled in classified rapids and that sort of thing are interested in paddling an urban stream that's fast. But, yeah, we are recommending that people paddle. Another consideration there is because the creek has been so high, city staff and crews have not been able to get in and take out obstructions, fallen trees, and things like that. So, there can be underwater obstructions as well that may surprise someone and tip someone. So, my recommendation is to not paddle right now.
All right. If you do, be careful.
That's right.
Yeah, I noticed one of the things that it seems to be a big difference, I'm sure it's partly the fast water or the high water, but, you know, the water used to kind of get dead halfway through that park and just sit until then it got back to the bridge, and now it seems to be speeding along throughout the creek.
I agree. The channel is larger, and so there's more water volume in the park. So, yes, the creek, it does remeander through the park, and so it should be slower when creek levels go down, but there is a significant amount of water in the creek right now.
Great. Councilmember Henderson.
Yes, thank you. I'm just kind of wondering, I'm assuming that there's a fair amount of interest in the immediate community as to what's occurring there and even further out. So, what are the safety measures on-site as we attract a lot of people looking?
That's a good question. We've been discouraging people as we see them approaching the site. We're allowing folks to walk the sidewalks in the perimeter of the site. We feel like that's a safe measure. But any of the internal trails are blocked off by "trail closed" or "sidewalk closed" signage. I know people have disregarded those signs in the past, but we really are encouraging people, it's an active construction site, to please stay out. People, when they do come into the site, are not visible because they're not wearing reflective vests, they're not wearing a hard hat, and our contractors are working in very large equipment and not paying attention to folks that might be entering the site. So, yeah, as much as we are able staff-wise and the contractor as well are discouraging people from entering the park, and having people kind of view from a safe distance is fine, or around the perimeter of the park, but entering the park is prohibited right now.
Are you having any kind of, say, community updates? Are there any tours that are on-site that are occurring with regularity and people are aware of those, so that maybe you can avoid some of the traffic?
All of the public information has gone out via email and our webpage. Both the cities and the watershed districts clearly state that the park is closed and discouraging people from being too close to the site because of the active construction. We have not done any tours as of yet. We, I certainly, as I've been out on site...
It's messy, I'm sure.
I'm sorry?
I mean, it's a big mess, so the tour is difficult.
Sure, right. And, you know, as I've encountered folks on-site, you know, walking dogs and out with kids in strollers and that sort of thing. I've chatted with a number of people who are, you know, asking questions and curious, and all of our contact information is widely available as well. So, the information, I think, is out there. So, as much as we can, we're trying to keep people informed and interested and engaged, but doing so at a safe distance.
Thank you.
So, again, the folks who are looking for updates can go to our website as well as to the watershed district website and get the latest that's happening and the status and any information about the project.
That's correct. Yeah, the websites are updated about every two weeks as we kind of enter new phases of construction. We'll be doing another update end of next week after we have some stormwater infrastructure installed, so we'll have some more information about that then, but they're both very current, yes.
Well, thank you, Ms. Damjančić, for coming this evening and giving us an update. We appreciate the information.
Thanks for having me.
All right. Next up is Item 6C, 2019 Quality of Life Survey Results. Manager Neal is going to introduce this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have with us tonight Jade Orocha. Jade is with the National Research Center, and she's going to give the presentation to the council and to the folks watching at home on the results of the 2019 Quality of Life Survey. This is our, in recent history, this is our fifth consecutive Quality of Life Survey. We do these on a biennial basis. We started in 2011. In 2011 and '13, we used a local consultant with a different methodology than NRC, who we've used now these past three cycles. And I think that Ms. Orocha can talk a little bit about that during her presentation, but we're happy that she's here. We've had a chance to interact with her a little bit today as a staff and then again with the council during the work session tonight. So, we're happy she's here, and we're happy to hear her report tonight.
Ms. Orocha, welcome. Thank you for being with us this evening.
Thank you so much. Happy to be here. I'm pleased to be speaking to you about the 2019 Quality of Life Survey here in Edina. And before I cover the results of the survey, I did want to speak to some of our approach and methodology. That's an important component of understanding why these results are statistically valid. So, the survey was mailed to 1,500 randomly selected households here in the city of Edina. And the important part to understand about the randomly selected households is that that is an important component of making sure the results are representative of the community as a whole. Other types of approaches to surveying or information gathering that don't involve a random selection of residents, you may not be hearing from a representative sample of your constituents. So, we use a mail-based approach. Out of those 1,500 households that received the survey mailing, we received a total of 427 completes for a response rate of 30% and a margin of error of plus or minus 5%. That margin of error is a measure of the precision of the results, and 30% is an above-average response rate for a community omnibus survey such as the Quality of Life Survey. Average response rates for this type of survey tend to be closer across the country to 20%, perhaps a little higher, so that 30% response rate is robust. Another important component of making sure the results are representative is that the results have been weighted to the demographics of Edina as a whole. We also provided comparisons to our benchmark database. There are over 650 communities currently in that database, communities that we work with and others across the country. We have included comparisons to our entire national database as well as to a subset of communities in Minnesota. That subset contains 41 Minnesota communities. The survey was six pages long. It was mailed out. Mailing began in February of this year, and the mailings included three parts. The first part was a postcard letting residents to know to look for the survey in their mailbox, followed by the first wave of the survey a week later with a cover letter and instructions, and a second wave of the survey a week after that. And I will just briefly touch on some of the key findings that are outlined in the full report. I do want to point out that these key findings were what stood out to us as survey researchers, but that there is a wealth of information contained in the full report, and we do encourage yourselves and the community to review the full report. So, our first key finding, Edina is a highly desirable place to live. 98% of residents rated the overall quality of life in Edina as excellent or good. This rating was similar to those given in past years and was also higher than both the national and Minnesota benchmark comparisons. Nine in 10 residents were likely to recommend living in Edina to someone who asked and plan to remain in Edina for the next five years. These ratings were similar to those given in previous years and also to both sets of When asked about seven broad characteristics of the community, at least three-quarters of residents gave excellent or good ratings to each of these characteristics. These ratings are similar to those given in previous years, and six of the seven were rated higher than the national averages. Excellent results there. Our second key finding, residents value diversity and inclusion in Edina. In a new series of questions on the 2019 survey, residents were asked how important inclusivity and diversity are in Edina and how welcoming the community is toward different groups of people. So, when asked how important for the people of Edina is it that local government focuses on creating a diverse and inclusive community, a little more than half rated this as essential or very important. About one-quarter rated it as somewhat important, and less than two in 10 thought it was not at all important. Seven in 10 residents positively rated the city's efforts to provide a safe and secure environment for residents of all backgrounds. And I do want to point out that the inclusivity and diversity questions are new in the 2019 survey, so we do not yet have trend information for these items. Our third key finding, residents note improvements with the ease of alternative transportation modes and travel and connectivity in Edina. Availability of paths and walking trails, condition of trails and sidewalks, bus or transit services, and ease of travel by bicycle, all of these ratings improved from 2017 to 2019, some of them substantially so. And additionally, the rating for availability of paths and walking trails was higher than the national benchmark. So, some significant improvement seen in this area. When asked in an open-ended question what they liked most about living in Edina, residents wrote down in their own words the response to this question. Of those who chose to write in a response, 40% wrote comments related to the convenience, accessibility, and walkability of Edina. This was the most commonly mentioned topic area. Key finding number four, growth-related issues continue to be concerns and associated ratings have declined over time. When asked how well, if at all, do you feel the city is managing tensions in the community related to residential redevelopment in Edina, about half rated the job the city is doing is very well or somewhat well. This is a decline from 2017 and 2015. In another open-ended question where residents were asked to write in their thoughts, they shared what they felt was the most serious issue facing Edina. And of... And of the respondents who chose to write in a response to this question, 36% wrote in comments related to housing concerns, teardowns, overdevelopment, affordability, et cetera. This was the most frequently mentioned topic area. Key finding number five, residents remain pleased with the quality of services in Edina, as well as their interactions with city employees. Nine in 10 residents gave excellent or good ratings to the overall quality of city services in the city. This was consistent with ratings given in previous years and higher than the national There were 33 city services asked about on the survey, and of those, 31 were rated as excellent or good by at least 60% of survey respondents. At least nine in 10 respondents gave excellent or good ratings to each of the services on the screen, and seven of those were rated higher than the national benchmarks. Some highlights, other highlights from the national benchmark ratings. Edina is rated number one in the nation for snow removal, number four for fire prevention and education, number six for fire services, and number eight in the nation for ambulance and EMS services, crime prevention and sidewalk maintenance. Edina ranks in the top three for a number of city services when compared to other Minnesota communities as well.
I feel the need at this point to channel for Mayor Hovland, who's not here, who would want to talk about the number-one snow removal ranking. Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's okay. Yes, given that the number-one ranking is A, in Minnesota, and B, was given in February rather than, say, summer, this is especially positive news. Another very high point in the ratings this year, thinking about the value of services for the taxes that they pay to Edina, about three-quarters of respondents felt they got excellent or good value for the value for taxes paid. This rating was similar to previous years, but higher than both the national and the Minnesota comparison groups. In fact, number six nationally and number one in Minnesota. So, excellent rating here as well. About 60% of survey respondents had had contact with a city employee or a department prior to the survey, and those residents that had had contact were asked to rate their impressions of the city employee's knowledge, courtesy, responsiveness, follow-up, and then overall customer service. Each of these were rated as excellent or good by nine in 10 residents. Benchmark comparison was available for overall customer service provided by the city, and this rating was higher than the national benchmark as well. So, excellent ratings here. All right. Again, there is far more information contained in the full report, but this was an overview of the key findings from the report. I'm happy to take questions at this time.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Orocha.
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you. Ms. Orocha, one of the things that city councils deal with more often today in 2019 than they used to is residents or other interest groups that come to the city with their own polling, right? They've done a Nextdoor poll, they've done a Facebook poll, they've done some other kind of polling work on their own. What makes your information, the way that you have gathered and presented this, more reliable or more statistically relevant than, say, some data that's collected via Nextdoor or Facebook or some other kind of polling mechanism? How is it different? How is it, how would you characterize those two different kinds of data that a city has to reckon with occasionally?
Absolutely, and that's a great question. We, as survey researchers, we do find that there is value in both of these broad types of data, but we especially highlight the importance of statistic, the statistical validity of a randomly selected sample of your residents, primarily because those that opt into community engagement efforts, online, community-wide surveys, that tend to be more engaged on, say, Facebook or Nextdoor or Twitter. These residents are more engaged, and therefore, they are different from a random selection of your residents. The randomly selected households, you may be hearing from residents and often are, that you don't normally hear from. And that makes all the difference in terms of getting an accurate snapshot of what your constituency actually thinks.
Thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Anderson or Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. Just more of a comment than a question. I'm kind of scrolling forward here quickly, so pardon me for a moment. What I noted in terms of our employee and evaluation of employees and staff was that the number of contacts is actually up over the course of time, over the, I think, five years that we saw evaluated. And yet, in virtually every single area of response and evaluation, it's at the highest. So, I just would want to commend our city employees, our staff, and our city manager in terms of driving that to maintain that high level of responsiveness and great customer service. So, really more of a statement than a question. Thank you for being here, by the way.
Of course.
Councilmember Fisher.
Yeah, I just would make the comment that we spent, what, an hour and a half grilling you earlier in the work session, so we've asked lots of questions of the survey. I guess the point I would make to people is, is this available on our website already? So, yeah, it will be in our packet tonight, so, and then it'll be-
So, website tomorrow, perhaps? Website tomorrow.
So, tomorrow, there'll be, you know, there's a spot on the website where I think you can see this survey and past surveys. It's a lot of information. It's broken down in every way you can imagine. You can look and see how newer residents feel about the same issue that, say, a resident that has lived here more than 20 years. And that's really useful information as we think about, and it's clear, you know, the one part, you know, we focus on, I don't want to say we focus on the negative, but instead of celebrating all the great things in the survey, you can see a downward trend in how people are feeling about development-related issues, which is understandable. It's a lot of change, and it's the dynamic we deal with a lot in this room. But I would encourage people to go and dig into the information. It's actually quite useful, so, thank you.
Yes, there's a lot of information in the report. There's comparisons by geographic areas, by demographic subgroups, trends over time, the full verbatim responses to open-ended questions. Highly encourage everyone to go and read the full results. There's only so much I could cover in an overview of such a comprehensive study.
Yeah, and I, go ahead.
I was just going to make, so, one other comment, and Councilmember Anderson remarked that, you know, the performance of our staff has been remarkable, and you can see it in the quality of service, and you see it a lot in the survey. But one thing we talked about in the work session is that there have been occasions in the last several years where the council has made a commitment to invest in something, whether that's new sidewalks or, you know, the race and equity task force. So, a lot of these things, and it's pretty interesting to see, and we'll just talk about the sidewalks for a moment and trails, how those numbers have come up quite a bit. So, it is good to see, not only, you know, you make a policy decision, and these were policy decisions that were made before I was on the council, but then the staff really digs in and gets it done, and you can see a few years later that people actually notice the difference. So, there are a lot of those in this survey, and it's nice.
Yeah, I was going to pick up on the same point. I think it's a really valuable tool for us to try and understand where we're going. And so, on the positive side, you can see things like the alternative modes of connectivity and transportation we're making headway. But on the more challenging side, we still haven't quite figured out the silver bullet on residential redevelopment, and people are concerned about that. And so, even though we've been investing in that and working on that, it's clear that we have to redouble our efforts on that front. One of the things that we talked about in the work session was how this doesn't just go on the shelf. This goes to all of the department heads throughout the city staff, and we start to really have it be included as part of our budget process so that we're thinking about what our priorities ought to be and how we can make headway on the priorities that we're interested in achieving. So, it's a great tool and important information. Final thing I would say is that, you know, your point about the kind of statistically valid survey versus the Nextdoor survey or the people who comment, it's not an either-or to me, it's a yes-and, and it's really valuable to have that chiming in. I would encourage people, I think, the work that MJ has been doing on Better Together is a great forum for us to hear from people and hear the texture and the kind of qualitative voices in the community about what people are concerned about. We need to be listening to all of this. It's just that there's different ways to gather this information.
Yes. In the survey research industry, we like to say that surveys can tell you what people think, but not why they think it necessarily. And so, as you noted, things like focus groups, online panels, other engagement tools can be really useful to dig deeper into some of these topics that have been brought up by the survey.
Terrific. Did that trigger any other questions for my colleagues? All right. Well, thank you so much for being here. Appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you very much.
All right. The next, that concludes the special recognitions and presentations portion of the agenda. Next is public hearings. We have one public hearing this evening. It is approving the preliminary and final plat for Edina Market Street. We're going to have, we're going to begin with a presentation from Director Teague, and then we will open the public hearing, and folks who are here will have a chance to comment on this application. And then we'll close the public hearing and discuss how to proceed on this item. So, with that, Director Teague.
Yes, thank you. So, this item before you, it's more of an administrative kind of action. It is a preliminary plat. It's the Market Street project at 50th and France. Just a quick rendering of the project. And we're focusing on the north side of Market Street. So, those properties, there originally were four lots. And what the proposal is this evening is to create three lots out of those four, two for the areas that are highlighted in light blue, those are the retail, the retail portion of that structure, and then the remainder is the parking ramp, with the idea that the city would sell those two retail, those retail spaces. So, this is a look at the registered land survey that's proposed this evening. And as you can see, it's carving out those retail tracks from the remainder of the property. This was reviewed by the planning commission, and they did unanimously recommend approval of the plat as proposed. With that, I can stand for questions.
Any questions for Director Teague? All right. Is the applicant here, and did the applicant want to make any presentation, or is it?
Just me.
Just you.
You know, this is the city as a co-applicant in this, as well as in partnership with the Market Street LLC.
Very good, because part of this is our property as well.
Correct.
All right. Well, with that, I will open the public hearing. This is the opportunity for members of the public to speak on this application. If you would like to speak, please come to one of the podiums. If you have something to share with us, you can do it on the center podium, otherwise the podium on the left or the right. And identify yourself, give us your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to share any thoughts on this topic. But not everybody at once. All right, seeing no comments, I'd ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So will.
In a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? All right, so, discussion by the council. Is there a discussion or a motion?
Just that I think this is pretty standard. We've anticipated it. It's been going on for quite a long time. I think it's, it's pretty straightforward.
So, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 2019-43, approving the preliminary and final plat for Edina Market Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes. All right. Next up is the reports and recommendations section of the agenda. We have a number of items on this, and I would note that this is not a public hearing, so we won't be hearing from the public on this, but a couple of these items do involve public engagement, and I know there are folks in the audience here this evening that are anxious to hear about it. I want to assure you that we have all received emails and other communications from you as this has gone on, and so we're aware of the issues that you've raised. And the first, so, when we get to those items, I just want you to remember that we have heard from you, and even though it won't be a public hearing, we're taking that into account as we're considering this matter. So, the first item is ordinance 2019-06, approving a second reading of a residential rental housing licensing program. And Mr. Manager Neal, I think we talked about perhaps continuing this item?
We did. Staff would request that the council table this item to your June 18th meeting.
And really, just to make sure we've got a full council to do the second reading on this. I think that makes sense, and I'd take a motion on that.
I would move to table ordinance 219-06 until we have a full membership.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none? Oh.
We'd like it June 18th.
To June 18th. Continue to June 18th. All right. And is that okay with the secondary?
I still second that.
All right. And any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right, that's continued. Next up is item 8B, West 58th Street Reconstruction Public Engagement Report. Mr. Milner and Ms. Lamont.
Hi. Thank you for having us tonight. I'm going to kick us off, and then I'll pass it off to Chad, but I appreciate the opportunity to talk a little bit about the engagement we've been doing for the West 58th Street reconstruction project. Before I get started, I'm going to actually take you back a little bit to 2018 to talk about how we kind of got here. Part of the 2018-2019 budget work plan is goal number four, the foster an inclusive and engaged community. And the strategy around that was developing community engagement protocols based on the International Association for Public Participation. And for that, two staff people actually went and got trained, and we brought that back to you, and we gave you our top learned lessons from all the learnings that we had for an entire week. And we talked about a process that we possibly could put in place to give it a try of how this would work and how we'd use these protocols. And so, what we agreed on was using the West 58th Street Road Reconstruction as that pilot project. We brought a proposal to you on December 4th, 2018, where we talked a little bit about the stakeholders, our promise to the public, what we were going to be doing, the in-scope and out-of-scope, and the level of participation, which was at the consult level, which just to remind you is listening to the aspirations and concerns of the public and seeking feedback on draft proposals, and then sharing how the input influenced the decision. And so, the decision to be made on this project was the plan elements for the West 58th Street Road Reconstruction. We launched Better Together Edina, our new engagement platform with the West 58th Street project, and it's been a hit. We've had over 3,000 site visits. Aware visitors, this is how the system actually gauges the interest or how people are engaging on the website. So, aware, again, are those individuals that went to the website and know about the project. Our informed visitors, they went one step further. They know about the project, but they maybe clicked on something, downloaded a document, watched a video, et cetera. Our engaged visitors, those are the individuals that actually participated. So, some tool that was on our website, they provided input or gave us some information based on the project or what we were asking for. So, we've had a pretty good success with the website so far. This is the stages and points of participation for this project. So, we created that plan based off the proposal, and so, these are the different things that we came up with to make sure that we were meeting the goals of that proposal. So, we have these three stages, and you'll notice in the techniques, anytime we did an in-person event, we also replicated the same opportunity online to allow people to come or to just do the online, or they could do both. So, it's kind of up to them. We have some measures of how many people participated and came to our events, and so that brings us kind of down to the final design concept, that stage three. And in your report, up until this point, you're going to see all the engagement of how we got the information, what information we got, and how we used it. So, that actually brings us to our next step, where we have the alternative design element. So, currently, right now, on the Better Together site, we have a survey. In addition to that, we have an optional feedback form that's available as well. So, we will be bringing back the final design concept to you July 16th, and Chad's going to talk a little bit more.
So, we thought we'd get into the details a little bit, just tell you what we heard thus far in the first few stages. So, we're really trying to balance those values of the residents and the community's vision for what they want to see for the city. for what they want to see for the city. So we value the input in all stages, like MJ mentioned. Participation, again, is not everyone getting what they want. It's finding that balance. We're really looking at a staff level, that big picture, what's the long-term view, because we have very little opportunities to make changes, and it's typically what street recon is the easiest, and that's about every 50 years or so. So we really want to take advantage of this opportunity. So what did we hear in the first stage? We asked questions on patterns and interests and issues, and we heard that it's dangerous for pedestrians. They're looking for safe facilities for kids and families to get to the school and park. There were suggestions about a combination bike and ped facility separated from vehicles. Felt the cars travel too fast, and there's really, really a priority to consider property impacts and those mature trees. And there was comments about the stormwater at the low point of 58th down by the park entrance. So we took those comments and developed an initial design, and this checked a lot of those boxes, and this was the least impactful, in our opinion, of meeting the bike-ped master plan, providing those off-street facilities for both bikes and peds, and then still doing traffic calming. So this was the initial design that we took back to focus groups and online. So we got feedback from those groups. And what did we hear during that stage two feedback? They liked the narrow lanes to calm traffic. The crosswalk at the park was beneficial. There's still concerns with sightlines. They liked the facility for bikes and peds, but there was some concern with the combined nature of that facility. They wanted more crosswalks at more of the cross streets. Was concerned with the type of material used on the shared-use trail. It was kind of a back-and-forth with the parking, more or less, and same thing with lighting at that time. Landscaping and trees, there was a strong opinion that the individual resident should make that choice of what's in that boulevard area. Stormwater was still an issue. There was comments about analyzing turn lanes at France and Xerxes, and then comments about transit and animal safety or a turtle crossing near the creek. So then we developed another string of alternatives, and that's what we want to just mention to you tonight and show you. So we wanted to make sure everyone was on the same page, so I think there was some understanding that we didn't all have because we didn't create graphics, enough graphics to show it. So you'll see in the graphic that this existing street is not centered in the right-of-way. It shifted way to the south side. So all of our concepts kind of build towards the north. We want to make you aware of the bike-ped master plan, of that emphasis on shared-use paths. We really want to get a lot of users out there, kids, families, and interested but concerned, people that are not going to bike in the street with vehicles. So let's get them spaces separated from the cars where they can actively use the path, walking or biking. There's concerns, we did hear comments about, you know, we love that feature, but do it on the other side of the street. And as a staff, we're always concerned about that, because it's usually that person on the one side saying, my neighbor would love it to have it on their side. So we just want to be concerned with those type of comments. Like I mentioned, we had additional graphics for them to provide feedback that maybe visualizes what we're thinking better. And then there was also some comments and emails already received about some lane widths, trail widths, sidewalk widths. It's a reminder that this has to meet municipal state aid standards, so there's certain width requirements we just have to meet when we design the street, because we're using financing through the state. So I'll go through the three alternatives. Alternative A, we're keeping the same, and again, if you notice the black dash lines, that's where the existing roadway is today, the edge of the street. Today, it's just two travel lanes. There's no bike or ped facilities. So you'll see that common black dash lines in every one of the graphics. And then we note on each side, the north and south right-of-way in red. So you can see how this existing road has really shifted to that south right-of-way, and there's a lot of utilities on that, the right-hand side of this graphic. And then to meet the bike-ped separated from vehicles, we use the shared-use path. That's the least impactful from property impacts to trees, and it still provides that traffic calming. So this is alternate A. Alternate B, we heard some comments about, just give us a sidewalk, concrete sidewalk on the north, and push the path, provide bikes somewhere else. So this one, we provided the shared-use path on the south, the same travel lanes, and then a five-foot concrete sidewalk on the north. And you can see in this example, we're in the finished product, it's going to be about 15 feet of additional impacts to the north from that black line that's currently existing. And we're also moving those cars closer to the north. So if you look at the option A, it actually kept the cars traveling eastbound in about the same position of the road adjacent to the residence on the south. On the north side, those cars were actually pushed a little further away from the residence. And this one, we're pushing that over, the cars over to the north with this example. And alternate C is we heard just provide bike lanes or bike facilities on the street. And we thought, you know, that's going to take a lot of space if we do both concrete sidewalk, bike lanes, and a shared-use path. So this one has basically everything in it, based on the minimums of the municipal state aid design, and you can see that is very impactful when you look at the amount of additional space we need compared to the existing. So that's 21 feet additional space in the built-out condition, and alternative C to provide on-street bike facilities in addition to those off-street facilities. So next steps, we're getting, you know, we want to make a selection, pick an alternative. We want a concept to really start this final design so we can have those conversations, one-on-one conversation with the residents about driveway impacts and trees and moving around there. There is flexibility in this section. We believe the west half, from Wooddale to France, could be one section, and from France to Xerxes could be another one. So there could be two separate sections for each half of this 58th Street. And parking, we kind of got a mixed bag on parking. If there's specific residents, two or three or four in a row that are willing to give some more space, we could provide parking bays. And we did that a few years ago on Tracy, when people came in and said, I really need parking. There was three properties willing to do a parking bay, give us seven more feet, and we did that. So if there's people that are interested and concerned about losing parking, we could do these bays if we get a couple people, two or three, adjacent to each other that are willing to do that. So as MJ mentioned, we want to continue that public participation on the website and gather feedback about alternatives and lighting and comments, bring back an alternative for council to actually approve a concept in July. And then we did open that survey. So of this morning, this was just one of the questions on there. It opened last week. The four areas we're asking for, the green boxes are, this thing is important to you. The middle one or the orange or yellow color is neutral, and then the purple is it's not important. And the four selections here are reduce property impacts. So that's the first column you see. So that one's trending, that is important to the people participating. We've had over 50 already. The second column is, is separated off-street facilities for bikes and peds important? And you can see we got about 30 of the people said that is important out of the 50 some. There's a few neutral and a few not important. The third column is on-street bike facilities. You can see that purple box is almost opposite. 30 people say that's not important at all. And then the last one is concrete sidewalks, and that shows that it's about 20, 25 or feel that's important. So we're continuing to get feedback here on the website with the surveys, and we'll bring all this information back. You have a 14-page report of all the information. This was done by somebody with WSB. It was Kurt and Phil. They were not engineers. They facilitate meetings, and they provided us all this feedback, and the engineers took that feedback that they drafted, and we came up with these concepts. So be happy to answer any questions, and if not, we'll see you back in July to hopefully approve a concept when we bring that back for you.
Thank you, Director Milner. Questions for Director Milner? Councilmember Fisher? No? Councilmember Anderson?
Just that, you know, I noticed there's been a lot of feedback on the batuminous portion of it. There's an eight-foot batuminous. Could you comment a little bit on that? Explain that? That there's a level of concern along that line?
Yep. There's some aesthetic concerns that we're hearing about, batuminous versus a concrete path. We're even hearing some of the width concerns. So a batuminous path, in my opinion, is an industry standard. When you're in the metro area and you're going to go and bike on a path, you don't see a lot of concrete paths around. People just don't visualize riding their bikes on it. In fact, the city's already done that down at Centennial Lakes. The concrete one is for walking, the batuminous one's for biking. So it's that standard that we're kind of addressing here. And there's other construction ability issues here, where if people need to dig through it, it's easy to repair. Concrete takes three or four days to cure if we have to fix it, either if it's private or a city facility. So the batuminous is easier to do that. And there's some other minor things, but the biggest thing is the industry standard.
Thank you. The biking capability, to me, is, would be a primary concern, just by virtue of its proximity to Pamela Park and how people go back and forth, get in and out of there. Is that, that's, I'm sure, part of your thinking?
Yeah. We want to provide a facility that meets the needs of the most users. Those concerned, interested, the family, the kids, get them off the street and provide a facility they're going to bike, skateboard, walk on. And we feel the batuminous path signifies you can do all that on it. Versus a concrete sidewalk, some people have hesitation to ride their bikes on concrete sidewalks.
Yeah. Does it need to be eight feet wide?
We think with the mixed use, it needs to be eight feet. I mean, if you look at alternate A, that's eight feet, and that's, meets all our needs. If there's truly a want for a separated concrete one, just for walking. So if there's this concern about mixing those users, we can provide just that, one that is basically walking. You can still bike on a five footer, you probably have much less people doing it, but this provides that opportunity to separate it. I'm not walking my dog, I'm going to go on that concrete one, because more people just walk on that, versus the shared-use path.
If there was a fourth alternative, what could it be?
I would look for suggestions. I mean, any of these can be flipped and maneuvered in and out, and we're going to, once we have a concept, move around trees and all those kind of details. Turn lanes are going to be analyzed based on traffic counts and impacts to properties, so we haven't made a decision, but we threw that in the layouts, just to show the possibility of those turn lanes.
Okay. I'm very sensitive just to the biking aspect of it and the ability of kids to get back and forth in Pamela Park and around through there, because I think that's a, it's a primary, primary biking path area, and I, but I'm also trying to figure out, there's just a lot of feedback about the width of that eight-footed batuminous passageway there. So, thank you.
Yeah. I mean, just imagine when you're walking on a five-foot sidewalk, and you just meet somebody walking. It feels a little tight. So we just want more space if you're on a bike.
Yeah. You don't really need anybody hitting somebody else on a bike, and that's for sure.
Councilmember Fisher?
So I, you know, thank you for the overview of the process, and I know we're midstream in a process where, you know, a lot of people have opinions, and probably not everyone's got the same opinion. I guess for me, and I don't know, you know, we're getting a lot of feedback by email, and yet, you know, I'm not engaged, I'm not at those meetings, I'm, you know, so I feel, I don't feel well-equipped, nor do I want to get super-involved in it, right? I want the process to play out. So what I'm hoping is that people feel like, through this process, they have that ability to give the feedback, and, you know, the, and I don't have any reason to not believe that's happening. You know, the folks were here at a council meeting, was it two weeks ago, a month ago? And at that time, it felt like maybe they were jumping ahead a little bit, and the alternatives weren't really out there, and, but it feels like there have been meetings and opportunities, and I'm not sure, you know, I'm not sure what the angst is, other than, you know, people are concerned about the width of a path and other things, nor what our role should really be right now, other than letting the process happen. That's not really a question, it's just sort of a...
I got a comment to it.
Go for it.
So if you look in the report, just like you said, what did we hear and what did we do? It's right here, both stage one, what did we hear, what did we do? Stage two, what did we hear, what did we do? So it's showing exactly what the feedback we heard and how we addressed it. And again, we're not going to agree on everything, the aesthetics of its batuminous or concrete. We're going to have to make a decision on that. Is it eight feet or five feet? But the bike-ped master plan, the twin loops concept, says we need a bigger facility, kind of that eight-foot, to meet the needs of bikers and walkers going to parks. We want to connect parks, we want to connect schools. This is right on that route. So those are kind of the big-picture vision that we're trying to use to come up with concepts with the feedback we're hearing.
So that's, and I did see that in some of the emails, so that a little bit of the rub is that we need to, you know, when you're redoing a street, you want to meet the needs of the people that live along the street and make it as workable as possible, but there's also a bigger community need, and those two needs are sort of conflicting a little bit.
Exactly. And it's a few of those items. I mean, I think we've addressed a lot of the traffic calming, the crossing at the park, the lighting issue, so there's, I feel like we're at a pretty good point for most of the points that were brought up, just a few of these last few items that we might not agree on.
So this street, obviously, you talked about municipal aid roadway. So who really owns this street?
We own it. We just get funded, we designate it. It's a designation the city uses because it connects other higher-volume facilities, and then we get funding from the state on the gas tax.
Which is different than, say, maybe my street, which is just a...
Exactly. That's 100% assessed. This one is only 20% assessed, because 80% of it is funded by that other funding source from the state.
So are there limitations then? Say you want to go with the gold standard, and you want to do an extra sidewalk on one side and a trail on the other, and it really starts building up the cost, are there limits to that? I mean, obviously then, 20% also, that 20% increases for the homeowners on the street as well, right?
Potentially. We don't assess for bike and ped facilities, so it's not an assessment. We don't assess for curb and gutter, that's a stormwater feature. So we use the same 80/20 split with the PACS fund on these projects. So 80% is MSA, 20% PACS, just like 80% MSA and 20% assessed. So if there's two pedestrian facilities, it just means our PACS fund takes a little bit more of a hit, and the municipal state aid funding. So once we have a concept, then we start getting into the financials of it and see how we can make that all work.
All right. Thank you.
So a couple of questions. One, on this offset, so on this particular slide, you've got the roadway shifted over into the, more the center of the right-of-way. But is the, have the houses lined up to center themselves on the existing street? So as you move the right-of-way, as you move the street, will it be closer then to the houses on the north side if you move it this direction?
Well, it will be closer.
Obviously it'd be closer, but does it get...
Obviously closer, but there's a much, there's a bigger offset to the north now. Those are front-facing homes? I guess I'm looking at that segment between France and Wooddale. That's kind of where we're getting more comments. Those are front-facing between Philbrook and Wooddale.
Right.
Whereas the ones on the south are more the side of the house, because you have Kellogg and Oaklawn and Brook. So those are closer on the south already due to this offset.
Okay. And then that leads to another question, which is, and I remember this from years ago when we were trying to put a bike lane on Interlocken, and all of the challenges of a bike lane when you've got a lot of driveways coming down, and is there, is there a difference, you know, do the best practices or literature or whatever dictate whether that has anything to do with whether it's separated from the automotive traffic, or whether it's in the street, or how you manage this notion that you're going to cross a lot of driveways as you're going?
Yep. 62nd Street is a good example. We have that multi-use trail there. People leave driveways, whether it's a sidewalk or a batuminous path, have to be careful if they live there, and the users need to be careful. So in either place, it's being a community, working together, and just keeping your eye out for the users. If you frequent a lot of the regional trails around, you see all different kind of things for, they may change pavement through a driveway, there may be signs warning of driveways coming up. So every agency's kind of made a different way to handle it.
And I assume then it also factors into which side of the street you want to put that trail on, whether there's more driveways on one side than another?
It would. You know, we look at impacts, but with, by, the north side is fairly open along there, so I think it's just more of, let's give us the concept, and then we'll figure out exactly where it fits in in regards to trees and other property. Steep driveways, maybe the boulevard goes to zero if there's a steep driveway or a tree in the way.
Okay. Okay. So from a process perspective, you know, you've talked a little bit about Better Together and the online platform. What other opportunities are there for interface with the folks who care about this and want to continue to be working with you to come to the right solution?
Yeah, we want to be fair from the start to the end of the project. We've said everything's going to be at those focus groups or the initial open house, and we're updating the website to tell people how to participate. In this phase of the participation, it's all online in the surveys in those comment box, or the comment survey that's in there.
So then what happens between now and the 16th of July?
So the surveys open the June 20th, then we review all that data again and see if we came up with a, maybe it's an alternate solution based on the comments, or maybe it's one of these. We review that, myself and Andrew and the engineers at WSB, and then we come back to you with a recommendation. And we post that on the website, we'd add to this report, Phase Three, this is what we heard, this is how it affected. And there may or may not still be a couple of points that we, the engineers and the residents will agree on, and then we bring those to the council.
And like you say, you may say one segment of it, east of France might be different than west of France, depending on the kind of feedback that you're getting.
Yeah, we're taking feedback from not only people on the street, it's the global area of anybody that's participated. We did mailers quite a ways north, quite a way south. We've got in school district, we've got other users involved. So it's feedback from everybody.
So those folks who've sent us emails talking about where things are at ought to be making sure that they're including that on the web platform as well, so that we're getting that information in there.
So we had the original survey form with those questions, then we added another survey just for comments. Type in comments, tell us.
So free-flow, you can tell?
It's not a forum, it's just submitting them.
They can tell you what they think. So if you're, the email information we're getting, you should get.
They should put it in there, and we'll get it.
Okay, good. Other questions for staff? All right. Thank you for your work. All right, next up is West 72nd Street Public Engagement Report. Director Milner is up again.
Yeah, me and Andrew will take team this one. So it's the West 76th Street Living Streets Demonstration Project Update. So this one is in two project components. One is the roadway configuration from France to Linmar Lane, and that was associated with a redevelopment project that the council approved for 7200, 7250 France. The other part that Andrew will do in the second half of the presentation is talk about pedestrian safety assessment. We've gotten a lot of comments about the intersections of Cornelia Drive and Oakland Avenue at 72nd Street. It might be an opportunity to test some things out. So we're going to ask for a motion and a potential approval of some recommendations from you for both of these. So you can either do it when I'm done with the first part, or do them all at the end. I guess I'll leave that up to Mr. Stock. So the roadway configuration, again, it was a requirement of that redevelopment agreement to do surface-level improvements to be reconstructed by the developer, to transform 72nd Street into a living street. So staff worked with the developer to formulate an initial roadway design that proactively addressed those resident concerns, and that was mostly traffic-related, speed and volume, and it incorporated many of the design elements of the living streets plan. So the initial concept that we came up with was a 24-foot wide street. There was a slight horizontal curve. Both of those measures are structural in nature and tend to slow cars down and maybe even have them think about whether they should be there. We proposed on-street parking on the north side only, 24-foot wide. You could have one-sided parking, a shared use path on the north side, and then a lot of boulevard landscaping features. You can see in the graphic all the green. So again, we used the Better Together site to gather some feedback, and we got 122 site visits. We had 50 informed visitors and 86 aware visitors. And what did we hear? So we got the design concept elements listed on the left, and what we heard and what we did. So I'll just step through those elements. So 24-foot width street, mixed opinions. We think it's better to have a structural narrow street for the issues that the residents brought up for traffic calming and things like that. So we proposed no change to that item. Horizontal curve, very minimal feedback on that one. We suggest no change there. On-street parking, there was strong opposition to that. So we felt, let's remove it from this. Don't have parking on that street, but at 24 feet, if we need it in the future, we can always put it back. And having parking on the street actually goes to some of those traffic calming measures that actually slows traffic, maybe addresses some of those traffic issues. So we could add it in the future if they're still seeing some of those issues, but there was strong opposition. So we're going to remove it from now. Shared use path on the north, favorable comments, no change. Boulevard landscaping, very little feedback. So no change on that.
Ted, can I ask you real quick? Do you recall, were there particular reasons people didn't like the on-street parking?
It felt would create a less safe driving environment in there and potential have interactions between multiple cars and crashing.
It is like the best thing we could do to slow down that traffic?
It is, yep. But it's at least available in the future if we need it. We're not designing our way that we couldn't do it in the future. What were the auto-scope comments? So access to and from this development project, that was talked about and discussed during the approval of the project. We got some comments on that, but that was not on the table. Street lighting, there's really, it'd be very difficult to get electrical service there on that corner of 72nd and France. So we asked the developer who's installing lights on their project if they're willing to install one light on that corner, and we just haven't got a response yet. But we're trying to see if they're willing to add it to their other lighting pieces as part of that project. So we would recommend, and looking for your approval tonight for this alternative design concept of 24-foot wide street, eight-foot shared use path, and then the boulevard landscaping with no parking on that north side. So like I mentioned, you can either discuss that now and make a motion, or you can hear from Andrew on the second portion of the project.
Let's have some questions on this. I think, I think it would probably be best for us to do any approvals at the end of the whole thing. Councilmember Anderson, any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do. Number one, it's a really good decision, I think, to remove the on-street parking. It shows responsiveness to the neighbors, it shows responsiveness to the community, so thank you for doing that. Then, I guess, where are we with extension of the shared use path west?
It would be considered with future street projects, future things going that direction. So there's currently sidewalk, no timeline?
That seems to be desirable, and it seems that, you know, a lot of people are interested in that. I would be in full support of doing that whenever possible. Then the last thing is about the lighting. So if we're going to vote on this tonight, I would like to see that in there, that we, if we're asking the developer to provide that lighting on the corner, I mean, it's an important corner. It feels like that's appropriate, and I would be in support of asking the developer or finding a way, in any event, to get lighting onto that corner.
Okay.
Councilmember Fisher.
Yeah, I support the idea of having some lighting out there, how we, you know, get that to happen creatively. I think we should at least try.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd echo that. The, I'm struck by the irony of up at 44th and France, we can't get rid of a pole, and now we can't find a pole. So we need to just, like, juxtapose those two. But it does strike me that what we're trying to do is encourage more pedestrian use of that area, and, you know, some lighting there really reinforces that notion that it's a place we want people to be out and walking around and engaging, so.
You know, it does occur to me just now as we were talking about this, you know, I always show my historic, you know, pictures of Edina, and I've showed plenty of 60 years ago, this was just nothing but fields and gravel pits. And it's hard to imagine, we're standing here saying, we can't get no electricity over there. Maybe we're still closer to the past than we like to think, right?
We can, it's just super expensive.
I know, I'm just teasing.
We'll work with the developer, have continuous conversations, and if that is not an option, then we'll see what other options we have as a decision.
Is there other lighting along that section between Linmar and France that's contemplated on either side of the street?
Well, that's where we're working with developer.
So they've got some on the south side of the street on their side of the project?
I think so. So could we just put a light on that corner that lights that intersection as part of their project? So that's the question we've asked, we just haven't had a response yet.
So the other question that I would ask, it's more my own thing, maybe, than the comments, is was any consideration in the design process given to putting a roundabout at Linmar? Just a small, you know, the kind you might see in southwest Minneapolis with a little monument in the middle, something to, you know, I know we talked a lot about trying to signal to drivers going into the neighborhood that they're going into a different area, and that would be a way to kind of psychologically signal that you're going into a different place. Were there any thoughts about that kind of stuff?
We didn't consider it here, I think, to go to that point, and Councilmember Fisher's previous comments with the development project. We're starting to measure traffic coming in off 70th and going out to see how much is coming in, how much is going out. So if we ever reconstruct the street, then we know how much actually is cut through versus the, I think there's 500 properties down in this quadrant. Is it just normal neighborhood traffic? And if we ever do the reconstruction of the street, then we can consider those small traffic circles, maybe at the entrances, that would signify entering a neighborhood. So we're trying to collect the data, support those decisions.
Which we kind of do on the north side of 70th already, you know, coming off of 70th, those little medians, something like that that just says to a driver, look, you're in a different neighborhood now.
I think more of the traffic's coming off 70th.
Coming this way, going east as opposed to, north to south and east, as opposed to going into the neighborhood.
That's just my intuition on it.
And in council comment later tonight, I'll echo this, but I'll note that the legislature did pass the legislation permitting cities to drop their speed limits to 25 miles an hour. So perhaps that's something we can, we can do something about in this neighborhood where we have 30 mile-an-hour speed limits back in the neighborhood and a 25 mile-an-hour speed limit on 70th, which creates some awkward incentives, so.
So it doesn't address the municipal state aid streets, it's local streets, I think, and we're trying to get a determination on what it covers, what we can do. And there's other, the industry is looking at, what does this mean from a state level, before we just have agencies willy-nilly putting them all over the place. So we are already aware of that, and we're looking at, what does that mean from engineering industry within the state?
Good to hear. All right, so other questions on this first portion? I'm in agreement on the lighting with my colleagues, and so let's then talk about the second part of it, and then we'll, at the end, we can move to whatever motions you need.
Thank you, Councilmember. So in addition to the roadway reconfiguration, we're also looking at addressing some pedestrian safety concerns further to the west on 72nd Street. So for several years, staff has received numerous concerns from residents about pedestrian safety along 72nd Street, but particularly at these two intersections of Oakland Avenue and Cornelia Drive. As you can see here from this picture, these two intersections are unique along the corridor in that they're both always stops and that they both have painted crosswalk markings. So in order for staff to get a better idea of what exactly the concerns are, our plan is to work with the residents to determine what, if any, permanent improvements would improve pedestrian safety at these intersections. So we started off with creating a page on Better Together, and we asked two general questions. Tell us about your experiences using 72nd as a pedestrian or a bicyclist, and what improvements do you think could be made to enhance pedestrian safety at these two intersections. This table here is, shows a general summary of the responses that we got. We kind of grouped them into five different areas. The majority of them were suggested improvements, for example, adding a four-way stop somewhere east of Cornelia Drive, increasing signage, increasing police enforcement, adding additional pedestrian and bike facilities. And then there were a few comments noting the relatively low stop sign compliance or observed stop sign compliance at these two intersections. The majority of these improvements, from a staff perspective, we felt were either infeasible in the long term, or ineffective in the long term, excuse me, or would not really serve the goal that we're trying to accomplish with this project, which is specifically to improve pedestrian safety at these crossings. But the last option there, increasing the stop sign compliance, that is something that staff feels is a key component to that sense of unsafety at these intersections. And so we're recommending, we feel that there's additional treatments that can be done at these intersections to specifically combat this issue. And that treatment, for example, is what we're proposing here is a curb extension, also referred to as a bump-out. What a curb extension or a bump-out is basically, it's a feature that physically narrows the roadway. And there's two key benefits or components or reasons why these are installed. One is to create a shorter distance for pedestrians. So the less interaction that they have with vehicle traffic, the safer condition it is for them. And then these features also compel motorists to slow down as they're driving through these areas. It's essentially a pinch point in the roadway. So if you sound familiar at all, it's because we've previously installed them in town. This is a picture of a bump-out that was previously installed in 2016 on Sunnyside Road as part of the Morningside A Reconstruction Project. And this, these curb extensions, for example, narrowed these three legs of the intersection from 27 feet to 20 feet. This case is slightly different because this was not an always stop where the other two are. But also important to note that, in this case, this was a permanent installation, but curb extensions can also be done in more of a temporary fashion through pavement markings and construction cones and barrels.
If I can interrupt you there for just a second, I remember this, this is at Grimes and Sunnyside?
Correct.
And at the time, there was a lot of concern about what it might do to school buses and the like. Have we got any experience on how that worked out?
I'd say it's working, working fine. We haven't had hardly any feedback other than the first year. As people got used to the facility, they're learning how to do it.
And they have to just go more slowly to go around the corner?
Slowly, and that's exactly what we want.
All right.
Wait a minute, are those tire tracks there? That's kidding.
I would add to that, in my experience, the majority of the comments that we've received, or that I've received since construction of that, is more people noting that they have to slow down now to get through the intersection, and that's exactly what we're trying to accomplish.
Okay, so maybe we can learn from that experience.
So what kind of, so before you is a public participation proposal for this pedestrian safety assessment. So I'll just kind of step through the stages of that process. We started in May with the learning stage, where we posted those questions on Better Together to get a sense of what the concerns are from the residents and what potential suggestions they have. Right now, we're in Stage Two, the building stage, where we've identified some concern areas and are proposing to test some potential solutions. So pending council approval of this plan, we would move into Stage Three, which would take place in the fall. We'd like to, we'd like to test this when school is in session, when pedestrians, when there's a more pedestrian traffic in these intersections. So we're proposing to do this in kind of two stages. Test One, where we install pavement markings at these intersections. So you can see in this graphic here, that's an aerial photograph of a similar treatment on Wooddale Avenue. And then we would monitor that. That would be in place for two weeks. We would monitor it, and then we would move to a second test where we would put up construction barrels and create much more of a physical barrier, and again, monitor that for the same period of time. During both of these tests, we would have a survey up on Better Together for residents to comment on what, if any, changes they've noticed during the different treatments. In addition to that, staff would measure pedestrian crossing volumes, stop sign compliance, and vehicle speeds on 72nd to see what, if any, effect either of these treatments had from a baseline. And then after that testing phase, we would go into the analysis stage. We would take that information, not only the empirical data that staff gathered, but the information from the residents. And then in November, we would come back to council with a recommendation on whether or not to do permanent intersection improvements. And so with that, I'll, I'm open for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cipione. Questions? Councilmember Anderson?
I don't really have questions, other than just, it's a comment more than anything else. I like the idea of the bump-outs a lot. I think that that will absolutely have a calming effect there, and we have experience in that being successful. So I just would underscore that.
Councilmember Fisher.
So I love the idea of testing out these cases. Have you, when you do these tests, do people behave differently with a big old orange barrier kind of cone thing than they do with curbs, or do you find that that actually translates pretty well?
Specifically, the difference between a barrel versus a hard curb?
Yeah, you know, barrels are up high, and it kind of really makes it feel like the corridor is probably in even more than the actual curb. What's your experience of that?
Zero. This is our first test of trying out facilities before we actually build them. We've talked about this on this council.
I must have misunderstood.
Little tactical urbanism.
This is the tactical, this is our first, we haven't had a resident group that was willing to take that to the next level, so we're doing it ourselves here. So we don't know. Let's see, all of the pavement markings at Wooddale, are they actually doing anything out there that'll kind of inform that with this one? And the barrels versus curb, barrels are much cheaper than putting curb in, and now, you know, that's what we want. So we don't know, I'll be honest with you.
Make little mistakes.
Fun to see what happens.
I think, I think a big, something that I'm really looking forward to seeing from as a result of this test is that difference between, what if any difference there is between just a pavement marking versus more of a physical barrier that actually requires drivers to move around or slow down.
And you still have the camera, because we can use the camera evidence as well as, you know, anecdotal, so that's great.
So, couple of questions. So we're, we're talking about these two intersections and the bump-outs, that's really the specific proposal here. And, and we're waiting on the rest of the corridor and how to extend the shared path and how to maybe narrow the street between Linmar and Cornelia until we get a project there? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, that'd be in line with our normal street reconstruction program. When that street's due, that's where we look at it, unless we got a petition from the residents out there, or direction from council that the street needs to be done before other ones to complete this facility. So we're considering these two because we've got a lot of requests to improve the safety right here. If we see something and make a recommendation, we have the CIP coming up next year where we can start to program that in with PACS dollars and stormwater dollars for the curb if we get a permanent solution. We're not looking at the rest of the street until it comes in with our normal priorities, with our street reconstruction program.
But in the meantime, we're going to do some measurement to try to figure out where the traffic's going once we get the, whether it's cut through, whether it's destination, whether it's just neighborhood, et cetera.
So we're doing that based on comments from the council to see the difference before and after the development project.
Right, right.
So that's why we wanted to collect data before, and then in two, three years, when that project's done, we'll do the collection again, and maybe at that point, we'll have it on the schedule for a recon.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is a really, it's a great opportunity, right? Because you're measuring now. We can make these minor adjustments, you know, experiment, make those changes, because we still have, you know, as we measure the progress and where the traffic's really coming from, where the traffic's really going, what impacts do we have with these little moves, because we still have in our toolbox future opportunities on Cornelia Drive in front of that school, really changing that element if we find that that's where a lot of cut-throughs happening.
Right.
And so I think this is just a perfect case study over time, how we can...
MJ, don't go away.
And so I think this is just a perfect case study over time, how we can modify those things.
MJ, don't go away. I got one for you. Hang on. Sorry to interrupt. She was trying to escape.
Nice try.
So if there's, I mean, if there's other questions on that, I wanted to talk a little bit about the engagement piece of this as well. So I'm noticing between 58th and then the Linmar to France and then these intersections, we're using Better Together, we're trying to, we're trying a lot of keys in the lock in terms of this engagement. Is there a reason that we do focus groups and physical gatherings with one, just the platform with another? I mean, are we just trying different ways of engaging? Or is there a reason that we didn't do, for instance, a neighborhood meeting about these things when we did do a neighborhood meeting on 58th Street?
I think it's just project-specific, looking at what the magnitude of the project is, what we're trying to get out of it. What's the goals? What's the feedback? And then tailoring the engagement to the project-specific, I don't know.
So not only the project, but also the stakeholders themselves. So once we've identified those individuals on the proposals, then we're trying to create channels or ways and use techniques that meets their needs, so.
Right, so, so that's kind of what I'm getting to. So did that drive a decision in this case not to do a meeting as opposed to 58th Street where we held some community meetings?
On this one, I think that we were.
Or did we do?
Primarily, what's that?
Maybe we did do a meeting and I'm just not kidding.
Did you guys?
I think we had such an engaged neighborhood with the development project that we feel, why bring them to another meeting? They were here how many times? Let's just get them the notice, have them go to the website.
At least on these intersections, you knew what the issue was. And certainly on 72nd Street, we had a lot of dialogue as part of the project about what the concern was between Linmar and France.
Correct.
Okay. So that's just, and, and I get, I, I mean, I like this notion that we're going to design a process at the beginning and we're going to stick with the process through the end and tell people what we're going to do and then do it, as opposed to changing gears in the middle. And I think that's kind of what councilmember Fisher was getting at earlier. We, we, we're trying some process things here and we want to follow them through to see how they work. Am I on, am I on the right page here?
Correct. We changed the rules, then the engagement that was before the rules, people don't feel like they were listened to.
Right, right.
We're consistent with the rules through the whole engagement process. We might disagree at the end, but at least we're fair with all the participation through the project.
Okay. Does that trigger any other questions? All right, so you need from us, two things?
We need two approvals. One is to prove the public participation proposal that Andrew talked about for the pedestrian safety assessment, and then approve that street section for, between France and Linmar on 72nd Street.
All right, so let's take the first one that we consider first, the France to Linmar section of 72nd Street. Do I have a motion?
So will.
Is there a second?
Just.
You want to amend that?
I do. If, if we're going to vote on this, I'd like to get the lighting in here in some way and reference it specifically. And how we do that is we have a couple of options. We can approach the developer or we can bite the bullet, basically, I think. Correct?
Correct.
So, so how do we ensure that we're going to go in that direction?
So I think that's a good, so you want a second for purposes of discussion?
Yeah, I'll second that. I just want to.
And I understand we won't let that issue get away before we vote on it. But, so we've got a motion and a second on discussion. One of the questions is where are we at on approvals with the project? Is there any, is there another time it comes in front of us? It's pretty much done, isn't it?
It is.
Okay, so it's just a matter of whether they can do it. Is there, you know, if, one of the ideas would be if there's a freight to pay, it sounds like the cheaper freight would be to piggyback off of their electricity rather than try to plant our own pole. Maybe that's the conversation to have.
So we're, we're having that conversation? And if that doesn't work, then staff will look at how can we get a light done on that intersection? I think, I feel confident, one way or the other, we can get a light there.
So should we make the lighting a part of the approval?
Yes.
Okay, and is the motion good with that?
Sure.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. All right, so then the second item is the Oaklawn and Cornelia process, right?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a motion on that?
I'll move approval.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. No further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thanks for your creative work on that.
That's going to be really interesting, the, the Oaklawn and Cornelia corners and that whole kind of experimentation, I think, is going to be fascinating. I find myself thinking about Vernon in the Grand View area with that kind of stuff. Thank you. All right. Next up is item 8D, sketch plan review for 6950 France. We have this, and then the next item after that is another sketch plan review for folks in the audience or, or watching from home. Sketch plan is our opportunity to give some informal feedback before a formal application is filed. It is non-binding on us and on the applicant, but it's a way of trying to flag some issues before too much money has been spent by someone trying to pursue an idea. And so Director Teague, are we going to hear directly from the proponent?
Yeah, yes.
Or do you want to kick this off? Or how do you want to do this?
I'll just quickly tee it up and introduce the applicants and they'll present the detail. So this, this property is located at 6950 France. It's the Galleria Office Building. It's a three-story, about 30,000 square foot office. They're proposing to tear that building down and build a 10,000 square foot retail, retail building. With this, this sketch plan review is a little bit different than our typicals where someone is potentially looking for a rezoning, where the city has a lot of discretion. This one, they just need a setback variance along the north lot line. Otherwise, it's, it's code compliant. But they're still seeking some input through the sketch plan. They have reviewed the design guidelines established for the Southdale District and they'll talk about that in their presentation. They're meeting that 50-foot setback that we're after on France Avenue. The plan is designed where that, that western promenade still could be built. There's the parking lot on the west side. So they have embraced some of those principles from the design guidelines. So with that, Ed Farr is here and Luigi Bernardi, who is the property owner, and I believe Mr. Farr is going to present the project.
And have you indicated to them the kind of timeframe we would expect them?
Yeah, about 10, 15 minutes.
All right, very good. I'm mindful of the fact that I'm almost on time here, so.
We'll mess, we'll mess that up for you. Don't worry about it.
At the risk of letting people mess with me. Welcome.
Good evening, Acting Mayor, Council, and staff. My name's Ed Farr with Edward Farr Architects, 7710 Golden Triangle Drive, Eden Prairie. Thank you very much for having us tonight. I'll speak fast to translate within this 10 to 15-minute limit.
You're getting the right rhythm.
Let's go.
Very good.
Giddy up. So I do have a PowerPoint presentation. I'll try and go through this pretty quick. You know the site. This is northbound France, looking northbound. We're mid-block along France Avenue here. The Cornelia Neighborhood is on the left, to the west of this block. Galleria directly across the street to the east. And of course, the Southdale Center, north and east of this property. This is the existing office building, two stories plus a basement. It's called the Gallery Offices on France. That'll be taken down. It's approximately 28,000 square feet with surface parking in back. It's, it's at its life and beyond. It's ready for redevelopment. This is our block, showing our, our mid-block location. Of interest to you is this West 69 and a half Street right-of-way that we have on our north property line. It's a short public way that is serving southbound France traffic only. Our site is inaccessible directly from northbound France due to the median on France Avenue, of course. To that point, people coming northbound, if they know, can turn west, left on West 70th Street. And through the neighbor Kinderberry Care, you'll see a shaded blue zone through their parking lot. There is a legal ingress and egress easement benefiting our property through that neighboring property for that circulation pattern. So we do have that. There's no signage indicating such, but that legal easement does, does exist, just for your information. West 69 and a half Street, that stub of a right-of-way, is parked on both sides. There's parking, 90-degree parking benefiting the Bremer Bank Building to the north and about 11 stalls on the south side benefiting this property at 6950 France. Accordingly, there's another blue zone that I've drawn in here called Proposed Access Easement. We're kind of shifting the entrance driveway to our surface parking lot slightly further west. And so conveniently and luckily, Mr. Bernardi also owns that BMO Harris Bank property, and so he will be giving himself a excess easement for traffic that comes in from southbound France Avenue, turning into the 69 and a half Street right-of-way, and then just extending about another 15 feet or so before turning into our surface parking lot. So I just wanted to explain that to you. This is just a dimensional site plan, showing our new building is approximately the same location as the current office building. We're shifting it north a bit to comply with the 35-foot south yard setback line from a different district. We're PCD III, and that New Vitamin Shop, Stock Brokerage Building to our south is a, is a PUD. So we have a 35-foot setback to meet, so we'll be shifting it up accordingly there for that compliance. As Director Teague mentioned, we are also going to comply with your suggested 50-foot curb setback off France Avenue to embrace that engaged street frontage, as your Greater Southdale District suggests. So we're doing that. Along that West 69 and a half Street, that's where we're asking for that variance. There would have been a 35-foot setback from that. It's a right-of-way. We're asking for 16 feet. The current building is at about that same dimension right now, so we're not encroaching any further. And, and more to the benefit of this project, we're going to be removing those 11 parking stalls that are half in the right-of-way and half out, and we'll be declaring those as proof of parking. We have a required 62-car count parking stall for our new development, and our surface parking in back will be 51 cars, and then we'll be proofing that remaining 11, which is that strip of parking that exists now along that 69 and a half Street. So if needed, it's there for us, but we'd rather have it green space and we feel adequately parked at 51 stalls.
So is West 69 and a half Street an actual platted right-of-way?
That's correct.
Oh, how about it? All right.
Pardon? So I just want to point that out. Also, as mentioned, on our west side, that's where the surface parking, that does allow for that future west promenade, woon roof, if, if so, be it in the future. And we are saving a significant amount of trees along the south there. I'm going to now change to a different graphic. This is just an enlarged site landscape plan. The lighter colored green trees at the bottom of the plan along our south property line are some very large trees that we're saving. The one in the lower left, as a matter of fact, is a 36-inch oak tree on our property. And there's some very, very tall evergreens directly to the south of the building that we'll be saving as well. We're planting not only per the ordinance requirements, but also having a very well-developed plaza, pedestrian-engaged environment along France Avenue. Mixture of plazas, visible stormwater management features. That was important to not only the city, but we heard that from the planning commission. We even were encouraged to put a educational plaque up, maybe to educate people about rain gardens, stormwater management, as part of this area where we're taking our roof water and treating it. Our lead tenant, Prospect, is a high-end furniture store, and we've been in talks with them about maybe contributing some outdoor furniture that would be kind of on display but for public use in this area as well. So a very engaging space as well. So lighting, benches, pedestrian, bike racks, I'm sorry, that'll be on the parking lot side of the building, and definitely some textured and colored pavements. So hopefully a very nice amenity for that France Avenue area in keeping with your Greater Southdale District guidelines. The next three slides are just some broad-brush image ideas that were generated by our landscape architect for a variety of these France Avenue amenities. This first one is just a variety of plaza water-type features that we're hoping to select from maybe one or two to incorporate into our design for rainwater treatment. So just some very interesting, high-end applications here. The next slide has a variety of different seat wall treatments for pedestrians that can sit, of course, and, and stay and enjoy the space, and some paving treatments. And again, we'll just be selecting from a few of these, just to let you know where we're going with it. And then the third slide here has a variety of site amenity options, bike rack styles, some pedestrian lighting, and a pergola that we may be placing outdoors as well. This was our initial rendering that was submitted with the sketch plan review package. Our lead tenant frankly was somewhat influential in the design. They wanted a very simple, clean, contemporary building. We were going after something a little bit brighter, white and gray, with some stainless steel accents. Talking to the planning commission, they felt strongly about retaining the material requirements that are required in the code, as opposed to going out with something a little bit more contemporary, like a fiber cement panel or a metal panel. So subsequently, we've decided to just stick with a compliant material of natural stone. So I did bring a material sample of, of a textured limestone that we'll be using on all four sides of the building. It'll be four-sided architecture, as requested in your zoning guidelines again. There'll be entrances to the businesses, both on the France Avenue pedestrian side, as well as the west vehicular side where people get out of their cars. So it'll be front-back entries, very user-friendly from both sides of the street. Large windows, that tall 20-foot story that's also suggested in the design guidelines that we're embracing as well. This is a more advanced rendering that we've been working on just over the last couple of weeks, subsequent to the sketch plan review application materials. This isn't in your packet. This does show the application of the limestone instead of the more clearer white metal panel type look that the building had. And we're just in the process of now trying to embellish the rendering with these site amenity features in the foreground. But, but it will be an all-stone building and nice tall glass features. Materials I talked about, there's a photograph here, but I did bring samples. Not that you want to, if you want to pass them around, that's fine, but this is a small sample of the textured limestone. It's, it's an off-white, very much in keeping with a classy, classic, modern feel, accented with a modeled textured architectural cast stone material with the gray. It's about 5 or 10% of the building. And then we have a warm gray accent trim, maybe wooden emoluments, along with stainless steel accents on the building. There we go. I blew through that pretty quick. I hope I hit my 10 to 15-minute limit.
Well done.
So we're, we're open to questions and comments and feedback, of course. So thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Farr. Councilmembers? Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you. I went over and drove through Kinderberry today. And I'm, I'm just noticing that's pretty tight in there. I don't know if there's any, any further thought as to what you do there. It's, it's a, it's a child's facility. And so I, I just have, it's a question that I, if we're directing a lot of traffic through there, and if you have a successful building, you'd be driving a lot of traffic through there. And so we've got a, we have a daycare facility there. And I don't know how much consideration that's been given. And, and the question that I had, yeah, if we can pull that up, it'd be great.
Yep. Think I've got the right buttons in my hand now?
There it is. Yeah, great. So, so essentially, there's two pretty narrow lanes that are accessible from West 70th that tie in. 69 and a half Street's essentially a curb cut. So whatever you do there will be a great improvement and the access to that will be, I think, improved. But I, this, this is a question for me. With the, with the daycare facility here, narrow access lanes and, and probably a significant amount of traffic. And so, just in scratching my head, I, I just wondered, now, we're, on one of your elevations, you're showing trash on the, on the, yeah, on the, the south side of your facility there. And so when I, if I, if we peel back to your overview there, that includes your access here, I'm just wondering if, have you talked to the Vitamin Shop at all about possibly some access through there, shifting some parking and a trade-off over to this trash area that might work out a little bit better and doesn't bring, it just doesn't bring that level of activity into the, into the daycare center? Now, that may be impossible, I don't know. I, I know you don't own that facility and there'd have to be some negotiation there. And the alternative to that is... some other way to route it, or we have people making turns here, going north on France, and then twisting around to come back in by the bank to come back, which probably isn't ideal. But I'm certain that we will experience that if we don't resolve this in some way, and right now, it just seems awful narrow there.
Thank you for your comment. The one thing I've been thinking about is the change in use. Day-by-day users of office space look for ways to improve their circulation because they'll get to know their route. The shift to retail use, the customers will be infrequently coming to the site, and so they won't know this route. There's no signage directing them through the Kinderberry site to our property. So frankly, we're afraid that they're going to fumble their way and possibly get a little frustrated. That's one of the challenges with the site of trying to get here. But they won't know to go through the Kinderberry site to get to this property.
So if they don't know, then they get there by traveling south only on France until they become educated?
Correct, or they'll go around the block, right.
Yeah, or they drive around the block.
Correct.
Which is less likely, given the nature of drivers, less likely. But I'm just bringing this forward because we're in a sketch plan conversation.
Sure, absolutely.
And I would love to find a better solution to that than, because ultimately, again, you're going to have a successful facility here.
Right, right.
So ultimately, there is going to be traffic, and people will try to find the most direct route in.
Right, right. Well, we'd like to ask Director Milner if we could get that cut through the median on France Avenue, so that we can have the direct left-hand off of northbound France Avenue, but I'm just afraid to ask that question.
That'll be a tough conversation.
Then he'll have to ask somebody else.
Our experience is the county will be, they'll be favorable to that, I'm sure.
Yeah.
I think that'll probably...
That would be the best solution.
Well, thank you for considering that.
Yes, thank you for your comment.
There's a solution in there somewhere.
Councilmember Fisher?
So my guess is that the existing access easement that's shown there has been historically there for some time.
I trust that it has been, yes. This is nothing new.
It's been a bit of a jumbled mess of parcels back there, and just the only thing that's changing is, instead of an office building, you've got this retail establishment there.
That's correct.
But Councilmember Anderson's right, it's not an ideal situation. I'm just not sure, you know, how you really resolve it through a, you know, one parcel project, right? You know, overall, I think I'm okay with the variance on the north side. I don't think that really substantively changes anything from what's there today. You know, I don't have any super-strong feelings about the design. You know, it's a simple, I kind of like the contemporary look, and to the extent, I mean, you'll keep tweaking the design, I don't think we have to worry about it too much. You did, in the packet, have like three different site options, and, you know, I tend to, just personal preference, I sort of like the more, you know, perpendicular lines, and it feels, with the shape of the building and the orientation of the site, it just feels like that is better for France Avenue and the sidewalk going by and...
We're happy to hear that. The planning commission felt the same way, and so did we, and that's why I kind of focused in on this concept A of the ABC choices. So that's kind of the direction we're heading, and we heard as well, so I appreciate your feedback.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't able to, didn't find time to watch the planning commission meeting this time, so.
Okay, good.
But really, that's about all I've got.
So I, one of the things that I'm curious about, since this is one of the first projects in the wake of us formally adopting the Design Experience Guidelines and the District Plan, is how that set of guidelines and documents, you know, how did that shape your choices in your design on this property? Obviously, we've been through a much different design on this property, and this is kind of the other end of the spectrum of one-story building, and I know it's between that 69th and Gallagher zone that the Design Experience Guidelines and the District Plan talked about being kind of a lower-height zone as you move east to west, but can you talk a little bit about how it influenced your choices on this particular project?
A building placement, while it just looks simple, like we just followed where the building was before, frankly, we were a little struck that the new development to our south, the Vitamin Shop and Stock Brokerage firm, was street-forward. And now we're being setback 50 feet. And for two small buildings next to each other that are relatively close in their development cycle, redevelopment cycle, we found that a little inconsistent.
Right, that was before we had adopted those guidelines, but we're still trying to get the street activation, and this is a different flavor of that. But I appreciate that you've taken the 50-foot setback seriously and...
We have. We could have done other things with that, and as you know, France Avenue frontage is very dear.
Right.
So we did, but that's probably one of the first things that kind of jumped out at us.
And did that, did it influence at all the choice of use, potential use on the property, this retail use?
I would say no.
Was that just driven from a business perspective?
Business perspective.
Okay.
Right, right. Yep.
Yeah, you know, my feedback is really focused on those Design Experience Guidelines in the District Plan, and I appreciate the efforts you're making. I know, I noticed the stormwater management and trying to daylight some of that, and the landscape architectural details make some sense to me. And this is obviously in an area that is going to be that area that's closer to the residential neighborhood to the west, and so you're kind of helping make that transition, so.
We are. And if I could mention one other point, sorry, is that okay? If I could mention one other point, as long as you were asking us about consistency with those design guidelines and whatnot, the different uses along France Avenue may require different levels of visibility. Everybody wants to be visible along France Avenue. Again, it's a very important corridor, and everybody wants to be seen. Signage is important, visibility is important, along with this street-room character that you're trying to convey, and the walkability and the friendliness to the pedestrian, as well as car traffic. The boulevard tree plantings, along with the height of storefronts that you're trying to get, and the distance from the curb that you're setting the buildings pack, aren't mixing well together. The blockage of views with the overstory trees is contrary to the views that we're trying to get on France Avenue, especially setback 50 feet.
Sure, and then you've got a mid-block business that you're trying to figure out how to be seen and noticed.
And it's hidden behind the building next to us, which is building forward. So we've just got some geometric challenges there between the overstory trees that are supposed to be hiding our building, which we're supposed to be on France Avenue, exploiting the views to enjoy the benefit of the France Avenue cachet, and so they're fighting each other a bit.
What signage limitations do we have in this kind of area, Carrie?
Yeah, so this is the PCD III district, so 15% of that wall face...
So it's really wall face, it's not standalone signs or things that they could put out on the street? Could they put a freestanding out closer to the street that people could see from France?
They could.
Okay.
Yes, and we will be providing that. In our rendering, there was that 100-square-foot sign-face monument sign out near the street. Has to be 20 feet from the curb, I believe the requirement is for that.
Okay. Councilmember Fisher?
You know, it is interesting, and Carrie, I don't know how much conversation there was about this, but, you know, when you read the guidelines, it is talking about the street room, and it really contemplates, you know, it doesn't really contemplate one-story, 20-foot-high buildings. So that 50-foot setback is really about, you know, taller buildings and creating the right street room on a very wide corridor, you know, that monumental corridor, really. So was there any conversation in the planning commission, or have you run this by anyone that was kind of associated with the design guidelines and how they're looking at that?
Yeah, that's a good point, because we do think about one-story buildings, so that much, we just focus down that 50-foot, and assumed there would be more than one story up and down France. It's, so I, yeah, I don't recall any conversation that we had on that.
It's an interesting juxtaposition, given the last sketch plan we looked at for this site, right? I mean, it's, so it is a really valid...
It's a Goldilocks problem.
Yeah. You bring us a tower, you bring us no. But it's, now granted, you know, when the corner, you know, the Vitamin Shop building was built, at that point, you know, it was all about bringing buildings up to the street and everything, and it really didn't reflect the fact that France Avenue isn't, you know, we're not talking about a little, you know, it's not Market Street. It's not, you know, it hasn't been a great pedestrian corridor. So now this contemplates a different sort of future, and there are these awkward moments in between, but I do think there's some valid discussion that probably could happen around what is being, what is that thought process? If, I just, it's hard to imagine a lot of one-story buildings that are going to come to us on France Avenue. I'm still trying to figure out how this works, but it's not our issue.
Yeah, and even the Vitamin Shop is, it's kind of a one-story building, but it's got a false second story. Does it have an actual use on the second story?
But for all purposes, it's a one-story building, you know, it's just architecturally what you do, but, yeah.
All right, so I'm not sure what we do with that, but that's the conundrum. We understand your challenges on that as well.
I heard in there we can get a 10-foot variance or setback, 10-foot setback.
I'm pretty sure you didn't hear that at all.
Counselmember Anderson, any other comments? Councilmember Fisher? All right, thank you for coming this evening and sharing the ideas with us.
Thank you very much for your comments, appreciate it.
All right, next up is a sketch plan review for 4388 France Avenue.
Yes, thank you, Acting Mayor Staunton and members of the council. So this one is up in the 44th and France area, where we've got the completed small-area plan. What the applicant is proposing here is to build an addition to the existing building, about a 12,000-square-foot addition. There would include underground parking stalls. The proposed use here would be a childcare and preschool. What would be required with this project is site plan review and a parking stall variance. They're a little bit short-parked, and also building setback variances. We've had, and it was included in your packet, some concern from the neighboring properties to the north and to the west about how this project transitions into their lots. With that, we have Andrew Commerce and John Gross here, the property owners, and Dan Pelman from Tucci Montgomery Architects to present the project.
Gentlemen, welcome. Want to come up and introduce yourselves?
Thank you, yeah, I'm Andrew Commerce. And I'm John Gross. We're supposed to say our address, 4901 Queen Avenue South.
Very good.
Yeah, I'm at 2830 Webster Avenue.
Very good. And are you going to do the presentation, or are we...
We're going to let Dan do the presentation, then we'll answer questions.
Very good.
Do you guys want to be there, or do you guys each want a mic? What do we want to do?
You could just kind of go in there, maybe we'll grab it if we need to.
All right, there you go.
All right, and Carrie, did you indicate how long you expect the presentation to be?
Oh, yeah. Same time frame, 10 to 15.
And my job is to make the trains run on time tonight. Normally, I get to just sit in the wings and wait.
I don't see the green, yellow, and red light.
Well, welcome.
Hello, councilmembers. My name is Dan Pelman from Tucci Montgomery Architects at 7645 Lyndale Avenue South, Ridgefield, Minnesota. So some neighbors of yours. The project, the project that we have before you today, just a minute, I gotta make sure I figure this out. Where's your, oh, there it is. Is an addition onto existing commercial building at 4388 France Avenue on the corner of West 44th and France Avenue. The existing neighborhood is a mixture of one- and two-story commercial buildings and residential buildings, multifamily and single-family buildings. You can sort of see the character of the neighborhood with one- and two-story buildings around there, a lot of surface parking lots. Our property right now is probably 70, 60 to 70% surface parking lots, and what we'd like to do is actually build a two-story building, I'm sorry, not sure exactly where these are, build a two-story addition onto an existing building that has a two-story hip-roof building here. The two stories comprise about 10,000 square feet, and then there's a 12,000-square-feet underground parking garage that goes underneath the surface parking lot back here also. What we're trying to do here, and then there's outdoor space on the second floor that would be covering the parking lot and the drive aisle here. The site would have a one-way drive coming off of France Avenue, would circulate through the site, and then come back out on West 44th Street, and then the garage entrance would be off of West 44th Street, go down, and then come back up here. Back to the floor plans. You see the site there? Here's the garage underneath, so underground parking. As Carrie said, we are short on parking here. It is a daycare facility, so most of the traffic right now for the addition would be in the mornings and the evenings, obviously for pickup and drop-offs. We think that we're improving the pedestrian experience in the neighborhood here with creating this as a one-way entrance, removing, right now on West 44th, there are two driveway cuts on the property. We're removing the one that's sort of mid-block, and just having a little bit larger one on the west side of the property, allowing for traffic, traffic onto West 44th to back up at the intersection, and hopefully easing that traffic there. Obviously, we're going to put a building for the pedestrian access. We're going to put a building on the street frontage instead of a surface parking lot, so you'll be able to see a two-story active use here, and should be very active during the day with the occupants here. We're extending the landscaping along the, there's existing landscaping here on the sidewalk. We have a larger, a wider-than-normal sidewalk in front of the property. We're adding more trees down here, and then there'll be landscaping at the entryway, so we have a wider sidewalk. Some of the concerns that you heard about the residential properties abutting this property is that there are not big drawings here, but along the western property line and along the northern property line, there is a, about a 12-to-14-foot retain wall. So the site actually sits lower than the neighboring properties, so when we actually build this two-story building, we're going to put a flat roof on it, so it won't have a hip roof on it. It'll be actually shorter than our existing building. The second floor will actually be about four feet lower than the neighboring property, so the second floor will only be exposed on the, from the properties, about 10 to 12 feet higher than the grade itself. You can see that a little bit in the sections here. You can see over here that the grade on the western portion of the lot, there's a single-story, a two-story house up here on this level. The roof, the roof will actually be lower than the existing roof here, and this will only be like a one-foot, I'm sorry, a 10-foot wall here. That wall will be actually... That wall will be actually set, the, the second story will be set about, about 15 feet from the, the property line to the, to the west here. So this will be a two-story portion. This will be a great, green roof on the, on the upper floors. You can see how the green roof wraps around. This is on the second floor. This would be the green roof, sort of a playground area for the, for the daycare than the-
So when you say the second floor, is that the, the top of the first floor is that level?
Yes.
So then, then it goes up where the proposed roof is to another story?
Correct.
So it's a one-story with underground parking and a green roof on the edge there and around the back?
Correct.
Okay. And, and you're going to use that as outdoor play area for the facility?
Yes. And so the, the outdoor play area here, the green roof here, is actually about four feet lower than the adjoining properties. So the, the building itself will become the retain wall and will, the existing rock-retain walls will be removed, and the building will become the retain wall and part of the fencing of the, of the, of the green space. And then there'll be a fence on top of that. So, you know, the, the neighboring properties will see, will see a four-to-six-feet-high fence, wood fence there. And I think, I think that, I think that's about it. I mean, we're very preliminary on here. We wanted to make sure that the council and the planning commission were okay with this. And we have been trying, we are setting up conversations with the existing neighboring properties.
Just in slightly more layman terms, the, you know, when you go by the site currently, what you have is you have the two-story building standing on the corner. It used to be Door Limited, and we were able to purchase that. We painted it white. We have the new tenants in there. We reconfigured that, kind of transformed it. Now we have the salon, Good Night Moon, and then we have a co-working space on the second floor that's going to be great. They're from Seattle. It's a, a female-owned and predominantly female-serving co-working space. So that's great. And so this addition, the, the building sits there as two stories of a parking lot, then you kind of have these huge retaining walls, and then you get to the neighbors' houses there. So what we're doing, can you go back, Dan, to the one, go forward from there, maybe three?
To the sections?
Uh, no, where it shows the green roof, one more there. So what happens is the parking in the back is covered by a roof, and then that's a green roof. And then the drive aisle is also covered by a roof, and that's a green roof. So when you're coming from the neighbor's vista, you sort of have 12 feet beyond the setback that's green, and then it's only one more story of building that you'll see. And also coming from the backside, that whole platform is green, and then you have the additional story. So it's a two-story building in an area where we, by right, could do three stories. So we have the building a little bit lower, and then we kind of transition back into the neighbors. And fortunately, the neighbors are much higher, so it's, it's a pretty graceful transition. And in the parking, Carrie, we weren't terribly short on the parking, were we?
Correct. They, based on code, they need 70 stalls, and they're, they would provide 58. So a parking study is underway, along with a traffic study.
Yeah, and I was going to ask about circulation. What do you anticipate in terms of how people, how are you anticipating, you know, I assume as a daycare, you're going to have a big influx at either end of the day? Where do you anticipate they come from, and how do they get in, and how do they circulate around and then get out?
Sure. And those are great questions. And how it would work is there's, one is coming in and, and going into the garage, and the drop-off is over like, I think, a two-and-a-half to three-hour period. It's, it's not like a start time at 8:00.
Sure.
It's as the parents drop off the children. So they can come into the garage, be out of the weather, unload the kid, they've, they're, you know, have two kids, whatever they're doing, and then take the elevator up into the daycare. Or they come in off France Avenue, come in the back way. But either way, they're kind of off the street at a period where the main uses of the building in terms of a salon and what have you are not happening. And then, in the evening, pretty much the, the same thing. So the idea is that they come off the street. If you're coming off France Avenue, you're making a right turn in, and then you would exit out onto 44th. If you come in off 44th, you would go down into the building and come back out on 44th. But in both situations, the, that driveway has been moved further from the curb, because there's currently one there, but there's also one that's a little bit closer to the building.
There's two existing drives right now. There's one right here, and then there's another one right here. Two curb cuts on 44th.
Okay. Any other presentation, or?
Um, no, that's it. The, the other thing too is that, you know, again, these block diagrams don't show what we're doing aesthetically, but the building is kind of the, the take on it is it's fairly European-looking now. It's white with the dark trim, and if you go on the backside, Good Night Moon, it's stucco and kind of a dark trim with multi-paint windows. This, the intent is to kind of continue that and, again, have the windows reach the street, have planters, have it be very activated. And so in the end, in terms of actually the survey that you had earlier, the things that people were looking for, services, this kind of hits it on all of it, because we have childcare that's right in the neighborhood, and we also have the salon and the co-working. So we hope that you find it acceptable.
All right. Questions for the applicants? Councilmember Fisher?
I'm just curious. Is there other childcare in this neighborhood? I don't, I don't know if you've done a-
I, I'm not aware of particular things. This is a, yeah, there must be somewhere.
I'm just wondering if we're assuming everyone is driving here, or if there's some sort of, I guess, you know, unless you live next door, you're probably driving there regardless. But just so I'm understanding it right, so the proposal is that you, you come off France Avenue, and that's really a one-way loop. So in that case, yeah, I mean, you're going to need those parking spots. If you come in the garage, you have to come in off of 44th. You loop around, come back out that same way. So you have a situation where you have two lanes exiting side by side. Okay.
One of the comments of the planning commission was concern for pedestrians going up and down the sidewalk, and one thought is just holding back the building just a little bit so it's a more visible sightline for the cars to see pedestrians and the pedestrians to see cars. So we'll consider that for sure and make sure that's safe.
And I think it was more the retain wall here, you know, trying to grade this out, which would have some, we'd have to work with the neighbor, the neighboring property.
So that's a potential sightline issue there is actually the, the grade from the next-door property to this one?
It's a pretty, yeah, it's a pretty steep hill from south to north.
Okay. And how many children are anticipating it would serve?
130 maximum.
And Carrie, what, what uses would be permitted in this zoning district? Other retail uses?
Yep. Other retail uses, restaurants, office.
Okay. And then the height limit, I know the applicant had indicated three stories. Is that inaccurate?
That is.
Reflection of what the code provides?
It is. It talked about three to two stories as it transitions toward the residential.
So currently, it's three is what's permitted?
I, let me-
Or is it two? I know in the, in the 44th and France plan, there is a lot of two-story with earning your way to three and four.
Yeah, so with this one, it's four on the corner, and then as it transitions to the west, it says two slash three.
And obviously, if you were to do some, you know, retail or particularly a restaurant use, would need a lot more parking, so I assume-
We've particularly shied away from restaurants. I mean, there was so many restaurants interested in the space to begin with, but it's, it was not something we wanted to do.
Well, and I think you'll find, you'll find symbiosis with your neighbors on that as well.
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson, any questions, thoughts to share?
Well, I, I'm, I'm a little confused about access, circulation, parking, in and out, all of that at, based on your primary or your, your proposed use at drive time. Now, there's a, there's a large population area accessible, so the viability of the business in terms of childcare makes, makes sense. But the access is, that's, that's confusing to me.
Yeah. That, I, I think as we presented it, it, we were rushing and trying to tell you about it, assuming you knew more than you did, just, Dan, can we go slowly through how that would work?
Yeah.
Go very slow for me.
Yeah, no, it's, 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 it is a bit confusing.
So France Avenue is over here on the east. It's a one-way drive-in, angled parking here. Come in here, there's perpendicular parking here. There'd be a, a back entrance along, along this portion of the school. And then you, you can back out and then come back here, and then this is a one-way drive coming out here to 44th Street. Also on 44th, then you could actually take a right in here, go into the garage, go down to the garage level. Be coming down to the garage level. There's parking, obviously. And then come, come back up, and then there'd be, like stated earlier, there'll be two, two lanes of traffic coming out that would be merging out onto 44th, out onto 44th. So there's one lane in and two lanes out on 44th, and one lane in on France Avenue.
And do you have the survey that shows the current condition? Because currently, you just have the building on the corner, the France Avenue entrance and exit, and then two entrances and exits on the kind of back flank of 44th.
We don't have the survey in here.
Okay.
But there's two curb cuts currently on this property on West 44th Street.
Okay.
And then the one, one here, so. And we're backing it up farther away from the 44th, West 44th and France intersection, which should help traffic in and out of the site.
And currently, what you see is just kind of a massive parking lot with a building on the corner. And when we're done in this plan, almost all the parking is hidden. So it's under the green roof, or it's downstairs, and just those little ones for Good Night Moon there that are, there will still be something you can see.
And there's all, there's also a retain wall here, so the parking lot is lower than the, the grounds of the existing multi-residential building. And that actually sits up pretty high compared to our site. And that's a two-story, two-and-a-half-story building.
All right. Well, I'll look forward to the, the parking and the traffic study. A couple, just another question or two. Your landscaping plan, how did you arrive at that? Could you expand on that just a little bit, landscaping?
The, well, it's-
This is all, I mean, does, you probably have more in mind, or?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we, we will have an actual landscaping plan. This is just showing what we can do and will do. There'll be trees, we can define that. But I think the biggest thing is the amount of green leading up to the building, because you have the green roof in the back and the green roof on the side that's basically at the, on the top of the first story, and then you have the rest of the building. So it's going to be very verdant as you look at it from either the, the south side or the west side, because it'll be green leading up to the building and green leading up to the building.
It's just transition in the neighborhood. That's what I would, that's, that's the reason for my question.
Yeah.
Then architectural compatibility, I heard you describe a European look that would be dark with some stucco. I think that's what I got there.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, it's currently the building's white, and it has a dark trim. And the primary facade is brick. So it's a painted white brick and with a dark trim. If you go to the, the backside where Good Night Moon has their entrance, it's stucco with dark multi-paint windows. It looks very European. So the, what we'll do on this building is kind of complement that. If, if it was all brick, it might feel too massive, like just too much brick. So if we go back to the stucco with multi-paint and kind of bring it, and maintain that sort of European look, multi-paint windows, just so there's a certain elegance to what it currently is and how to extend that. That's what we would do.
Okay. I understand a little bit better.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Councilmember Fisher?
So I'm, I'm really, you know, my brain's trying to catch up with the whole deal. And, I mean, one of the things I know, having gone through the small-area planning approvals for this neighborhood, is that there's a concern about being, well, we know, we, we're underparked, right? We, we don't have enough parking spaces, which puts pressure on the neighborhood. And so just, you know, going into this, knowing that, you need to know that, understand that, that there's going to be a, a pressure of, so if every project comes to us and says, well, we're only under by like 12 spots, but every project's doing that, it, it kind of creates a, a bigger problem in the neighborhood. Now, I'm not saying we can't overcome that. I think the parking, the traffic study's all going to be very important. But I can't help, you know, when I look at this site, and I, and I think, you know, this daycare with, the idea of using what's unique about a site to the benefit of the whole is good. And in your case, you're saying, hey, because we have this grade issue, we can have a daycare, we can park underneath, and we can get this daycare up on the upper level. And that's true. But you have to overcome the fact that you have this heavy load of traffic twice a day that's kind of close to the times where everyone else is moving around. So recognizing that as a, as a potential issue, potentially a really big issue. Then I look at that and think about, we keep talking about sort of the, the community parking. It's also kind of a natural site where you could have two levels, levels of parking behind some development, not to mention you're below grade parking because of that grade. Again, I can't, I'm just imagining here. And I don't know that, I mean, that doesn't work for a daycare, right? And you're here to talk about a daycare, and I totally get that. But it just makes me wonder about a site like this. And, I mean, on the one hand, I think a daycare with the, the co-working space you're talking about, that, that could be a really dynamic kind of combination. But clearly, there are some hurdles, I think, with the, and it's not just the number of parking spaces. Believe me, I'm, I'm the last person that really worries so much about parking. I tend to, I think we overpark some more than we underpark. But I think there's some real issues you're going to have to work out on the, and I, I have to get more familiar with the site, but if we really do have this retaining wall and grade and sightline issue, I think that's a real issue as, as, you know, this neighborhood, there's a lot of movement from the neighborhood out to the commercial area and making sure that we don't have that conflict and, and, you know, having a bad pedestrian environment. Because the one thing we really want in this neighborhood is a great pedestrian environment. That's got to be number one. So thinking about that as you work out all these issues in this design, I think will be really important.
I agree with you, and I thank you for commenting on that. And I think, I think there's challenges with a site like this, because again, if we were not into adaptive reuse or whatever, we would tear the building down and come in with four stories or five and end up at four and three. And we'd have this thing that even if it were by right, it would be bigger than what the neighborhood wants. And if we did apartments there or condos, it would be, they don't, you know. So to be able to bring the services in and ease up on size and scale and get close, I think variance-wise, we're just going for the parking variance, and I think that's, that's it, isn't it?
Setbacks. Setbacks.
Okay. Yeah. So it's, it's not a, it's not a hulking thing, but it is absolutely about community. And if you think of the need for childcare and how to get there, I mean, this is, is very walkable, rideable in the, in the, then you're pulling a bike, those kind of things. And it's, it's kind of cool that there is the underground and the back, because people can come and drop off and go. But to hit that perfectly, you know, where it would be like, hey, it doesn't bother anyone ever, or there's not even a slight possibility to be way out in the suburbs in a huge lot, and that doesn't fit with people coming in and going downtown or doing what they do. So it's, it's a little bit of compromise, but it's, it will be very thoughtful, and it will be very pedestrian. That's, that's kind of the intent.
Yeah, and I don't want to- Yeah, and I don't want to give the impression that I, that I don't think daycare or childcare is a good use here. I think it could be a really good use. The, the one thing I would, and again, this is just sort of those initial thoughts and about where I think the struggles will be as you start, you know, refining your design and just being really aware of those things. Just glancing at that lower-level parking, you know, as you know, and I'm trying to imagine, so, like, who's going down there? Is it, is it employees? Are you trying to get people down there that are very familiar? Because, you know, the challenge you have is you've got dead ends. And how do you, if you get down there and it's full and then someone's coming in behind you, I mean, just, you're in sketch plan, I know it's, you know, you have that all worked out. But those are all the kind of things that I imagine will, will make a difference, right?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And, you know, it's expensive to do, so we want to get it right. So we're going to put a lot of effort into getting that, you know, kind of as perfect as you can get it and meet all the codes and do all of that, yeah.
But, yeah, I think it could be a creative idea.
So I think one of the things that I think is important about sketch plan, and I think part of the reason you come to us with a sketch plan instead of straightaway making an application, is we can spot issues for you. And we have a certain amount of expertise and familiarity from our work as elected officials and following the small area plan. And there's folks in the neighborhood who have a lot of expertise, some of whom are in the room. If you haven't had a chance to meet them, I'd encourage you to engage with them. I had a chance to stand in the yard of the neighbor just to the east or just to the west. And, you know, it's, there's understandable concerns there. I think it doesn't take long to kind of figure that out. There's going to be a lot of trees and the like and that retaining wall, and how do you manage that transition? And I think there's some good things about this, but the, you know, the issues you're hearing getting spotted are kind of that transition to the residential, this traffic with Forty-Fourth Street, where Forty-Fourth Street really dumps from that entire neighborhood to France in the morning and in the evening the other way and vice versa. And how you're going to get your patrons in and out of there in a way that's not going to gum that up is an important thing to think through. And then, you know, there's some nice features about this notion of a green roof and kids playing outside is sure better than a, you know, rooftop dining and, and noisy nighttime use. So I think that's a positive, and the use could really be, have a synergy with your coworking space as well. But I'd encourage you, as you're moving along, to engage with your neighbors, and, and they will bring some expertise and some ideas, I think. I don't think they're afraid of development in the area, but I think they will give you some ideas about how you might be able to manage that. And hopefully, we've given you some ideas as well.
Yes.
While we're on the topic of parking, Carrie, can you give us any sense of where we are in terms of our efforts to pursue the district parking notion and, as part of the small area plan?
Yeah, so that's part of our budgeting CIP process. You'll see the cycle through our next cycle of the, of the CIP.
And I don't know how much you've had a chance to talk to staff, but as part of the small area plan, and if you've studied the small area plan, there's really this notion that behind those storefronts on France, south of Forty-Fourth and north of Sunnyside, there's some opportunities. It's not easy, it's quite a jigsaw puzzle to put together, but we're hoping to try to create that. But again, it goes to what councilmember Fisher indicated, which is we're trying to enhance the pedestrian-friendly nature of this area. And so I think you're really going to have to think through this traffic pattern as you're coming in and out those two times of the day.
Okay.
Any other thoughts from councilmembers? All right, thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
And thank you for your input. We'll definitely blend it in there, get it for you. Thank you.
All right. Final item under this section is Resolution Number 201944, Accepting Grants and Donations. Bear with me for one moment. There's Hovland texting me, asking how the meeting went. Obviously not watching. All right, so we have Park and Rec, Andy Worsak, Two Swamp White Oaks and Two Matador Maple Trees for Wooddale Park for $1,540, and Jeff Huggett and Diane Lindquist, New Diving Board at the Aquatic Center, $10,700. Two very generous donations to the city. Is there a motion to approve accepting those donations?
So moved those very generous gifts.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And those are terrific. All right, so then we're on to correspondence and petitions. Is there any other correspondence? Manager Neil, than what we have in front of us?
There is not.
Okay. And then the second item under that is received petition requesting permanent infrastructure to reduce water levels in Indian Head Lake. And we need a motion to receive the petition referred to Engineering Department for consideration. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Minutes of the Transportation Commission and the Energy and Environment Commission are also in our packet. Next up is Aviation Noise Update. Manager Neil, is there anything to report?
No update tonight for me.
Mayor and Council comments. Councilmember Anderson.
Yeah, I, our conversations often center around interaction and getting community feedback. And, and I, when MJ was speaking earlier tonight, I thought, how do we drive more people to Better Together? And you can't just say, well, let's encourage people to go to Better Together on Better Together. So, you know, how do we, I just, and we're in the formative stages there, but I think it's an exciting stage. And ultimately, that's, that's really where much of our feedback is going to have to come in the future. And it's just a head scratch for me to say, how do we get more people? How do we drive people to that site? One of the things, I think that in, in marketing, one of the things that you do is you use direct mail to drive people to a site, or even print ads to drive people to a site. So I just think going forward, something we think about. Second thing, Mayor Hovland received a letter this week from Larry Loka that I think everybody had a chance to read. And, you know, Mr. Loka has a long profile, many, many years of very successful development experience in our city. Also plays a lot of golf over at Edina. His comments, I think, are useful, and I think he made some very good ones there. And the, one of the things, I'll just spend just a moment on his perspective on architectural compatibility with neighborhoods and design being a driving factor going forward. And I often hear that, and I think, well, you know, here's one of the better experts that we have in our city on development, and he's identifying design techniques as we go. And, and I think that's, that's good advice. He also was able to point out a couple of areas, including Pentagon Park, where more density could be involved. I hope that we get to that point at some time. Also identified a much broader area within, essentially within the Greater Southdale District for future development. And I think that he's on the right track in identifying areas that we can get more density but not infringe on neighborhoods. So I think that's just, that's worth a good read. And in fact, maybe sometime he'd be willing to come in and discuss this at a council meeting or even at a work session. I think he's got some good thoughts.
Yeah, I, I enjoyed his perspective. I, I thought it was particularly valuable that he was speaking from the perspective of what are the opportunities that we have in front of us, and, and does it with great credibility as someone who, you know, for a generation or longer contributed to where we are today. So, thank you for that.
Twin Cities in general.
Yeah, right. Councilmember Fisher.
I didn't plan on saying much tonight, but I've just been thinking a lot about, so the last year I've been in Mississippi quite a bit to watch baseball, and now I'm in Kentucky to watch baseball. And in both cases, normally, if I'm lucky, I fly. It makes it a very quick trip. But sometimes I actually drive. And this last weekend, my wife and I were driving to Kentucky, and we're following the Mississippi River essentially down to St. Louis and a little bit beyond before we hang a sharp left. And there's complete devastation along the Mississippi, and the rain just keeps coming. And as I'm driving and I'm watching all of this, and of course, part of this is driving by the sign, which I drive by every time to Edina, Missouri. And I take a picture every time. Like, it's going to change. I've got a, I've got seven pictures of Edina, Missouri sign. But I'm always struck by the fact that we're not even the only Edina, right? And I just keep thinking about how we're all so linked in this world. And in this case, literally by this river. And that everything we do here impacts somebody else. You know, this development that we all talk about and we all argue about, density, no density, should we just let people build more out on farm fields? These are big decisions, and they impact not only people in our community, but people all over. And I think about those farm fields that are in, you know, 10 feet of water right now, and they're not planting anything there. Nothing's going to grow there, which means it's going to come back around and we're going to pay more for groceries. We're all linked, we're all in this together. And I don't know what that all means, other than it was a real revelation as I'm driving down along this river again.
Yeah, and there's, there's something about water that connects things more quickly, because it finds the cracks on cement, so to speak. I've had a chance in the last couple of weeks to visit with my neighbor, Bob Tengden, who was once again asking me about the water that's creeping from the park into his backyard. And, and I actually got a great, I want to thank Director Milner, provided me with a great email that basically said, look, it's, we can pump it off of his property, but we're pumping it onto somebody else's property, because the water is high everywhere. And we've got issues with that, and we've, it makes it all the more important for us to really lean into this stormwater management issue in one way or another, because it's, the contractions are coming closer and closer together, the times when we're hearing about this and that we're getting problems are more and more frequent. So, so I concur with your notions. I did want to raise, I promised Director Milner that I would raise the fact that our legislators are to be thanked. Senator Franzen and Representatives Elkins and Edelson were successful in helping to get legislation passed at the state legislature this year, giving cities local control over what the, what the speed limit can be in their communities, so that we don't have to live with this 30 mile an hour speed limit on city streets unless there fits into three or four exceptions that only happen on Tuesdays when it's below 40 degrees. And so I would encourage staff to look at that and see. And I get, and I have this conversation out in Excelsior with our city engineer, too, who just goes, ah, speed limits, bah, stop it! But there, we have to remember also that there's members of our community who say, you know, my kids are out playing in the street and the cars are going by too fast. And I get that the most important thing we can do is make the design changes like we talked about on 72nd Street today, like we're talking about the innovative stuff you're doing on Oaklawn and Cornelia, that's great stuff, and we've got to keep doing that. But it also doesn't hurt to put a few signs up that say you're going slower than 30 miles an hour, because you're in a neighborhood. So I, I think we could, while we're trying to make that culture change, we could, we can consider that anyway. And I look forward to future debate on that topic. And then finally, I will just thank my colleagues and staff for indulging my, my efforts to chair this meeting tonight, which I discovered this morning when I called Manager Neil and said, what are we doing about a, a chair tonight? And he said, oh, you didn't, you didn't see my email! So I appreciate your indulgence, and I look forward to Mayor Hovland's return. This is not as easy as he makes it look, so. Manager Neil.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have just two things. One is to invite you to a welcoming event, if you're able to attend, for Perry Vedder, our new director of Parks and Recreation. Perry's going to start his new job on Monday. We're having a welcoming event for him at the Centennial Lakes Park Amphitheater at 8:00 in the morning. And we're going to excuse all of our Parks and Rec employees to kind of meet there.
At 8:00 tomorrow morning?
8:00, Monday morning, June 10th.
Next Monday, okay.
And you'll get a chance, you, you will get plenty of chances to meet him, but if you want to meet him on day one, that's where he's going to be.
I'm sorry, when, what's the location?
The Centennial Lakes Park Amphitheater. The second thing I have is that Councilmember Brindle could not be here tonight, but she asked me to read a, a statement to you all. This is what she would have said tonight if she were here. Are you ready? All right. This is regarding the city's lodging taxes and the Convention and Visitors Bureau. For many years, the Edina Community Foundation has provided funds to pay for special community events in Edina, using funds donated to the foundation from Fairview Southdale Hospital. Due to changes in the hospital's administration, those funds are no longer available. In fact, those, there are currently no funds available to pay for the 2019 Fourth of July fireworks. We have, I have followed up, and we do know that there will be fireworks, and they're paid for by the community foundation. But, but the point she's trying to make is that in the past, those fireworks were underwritten by the hospital, and they are no longer underwritten by the hospital. Through March of 2019, the lodging taxes paid to the city of Edina by the Weston Galleria Residence Inn and the Homewood Suites totaled $111,235.45, or roughly $37,000 per month. Of that total, $105,673.68 was paid to Explore Edina in accordance with Edina's lodging tax ordinance for the purpose of promoting events, shopping, dining, lodging, and recreation in Edina. The remainder is held by the city of Edina to cover administrative costs. I would like to propose that the city of Edina withhold a portion of the lodging taxes collected from hotels in Edina for the purpose of funding community events. These lodging tax funds are currently paid to Explore Edina for the purpose of promoting events, shopping, dining, lodging, and recreation in Edina. For 2019, I would like to propose the city of Edina withhold one month's lodging tax collected for the purpose of funding community events in Edina. That would mean that the city of Edina would withhold $37,000 to be used to pay for fireworks at this year's community events. Further, I'd like to propose that the Edina City Council consider amending the lodging tax ordinance to provide funding for community events on an ongoing basis. So I think the last sentence is, is important, because I, and I did tell Councilmember Brindle that what, what she's proposing is really counter to the agreement that we have with the Chamber of Commerce right now. We struck an agreement with them in 2014. That agreement says we will provide 95% of what we collect in terms of lodging taxes straight to the chamber, and they will use that 95% to operate the Convention and Visitors Bureau. There are escapes out of this agreement, but it does provide that we provide a 365-day notice if we want to cancel the agreement. If we want to propose an amendment to the agreement, as long as both parties agree to that amendment, we could do that anytime. So I have, I have shared this message with the, with the Chamber of Commerce, so they knew that we were going to be, I was going to be sharing this with you tonight. And I think we'll have another opportunity to address it more formally at either this, I think, the first meeting in August, when, when the chamber reps and the Explore Edina folks make their annual presentation to the council about how much money they received in lodging taxes and how they spent those lodging taxes over the year, over the past year. That's required in, in our agreement with them, and that's, we've been doing that the past, well, the past four years, actually. That's, that's all I got.
Member Brindle's long arm, all the way from Germany.
All the way from Hamburg tonight, yes.
Participating in, in council comment. Well done. All right, any other comments from councilmembers? I will just note that our tentative schedule called for the manager's comments to happen at 10:50, and it is now 10:00. at 10:50 and it is now 10:10. And I'm just going to declare victory.
Well done, well done.
And adjourn the meeting. Thank you.